Okay.
Great, all right. We're now back at 6:31 from closed session. And councillor, would you please update us on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor of the City Council. Met in closed session pursuant to government code section 54957 subdivision B, performance evaluation of the city manager. There was no reportable action.
All right, thank you. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at 6:32. Take a deep breath. I can go. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular session of the Solvang City Council for Monday, September 13th. Call the meeting to order at 6:33. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Infante.
Here.
Mayor Protan Arona.
War.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Urick.
Here. And councillor Infante, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely. Stand, put your hand over your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now we have some presentations. We'll start off with the San Andreas Valley Foundation proclamation. Do you have that down there? One of these up here?
Those are they. So our presentation does start with the San Andreas Valley Foundation proclamation. And it is honoring, I actually don't have that on the agenda, but do we have these or?
We have two here. One, it's the San Andreas Valley News and the San Andreas Valley Foundation's selection of Woman of the Year for 2020. And this would be Pam Nico. Second one here is in recognition of Chris Nielsen, who has been selected the Man of the Year for 2020. And last is the recognition for Eric Gregerson, who has been selected for the lifetime achievement recipient for 2020. So congratulations to all three. I don't know if any are here for a presentation. We'll get those out to you.
Mayor, if I just may mention that one of our employees, Nathan Gassianto, is also, has been named the volunteer for the use through this program as well.
All right.
Just a shout out to one of our own employees.
There you go. Way to go, Nathan. And right now, we'll have a presentation from the Elveroi, their annual report.
Mayor, councilmembers, hello. I'm here this evening to give a report on operations and programs at Elveroi Museum of History and Art and to thank all of you for the annual support being grant that we receive. I brought some pictures. You don't have to look at me. We've got a little short PowerPoint presentation. I can click it through. Which one's the forward? Just this one? Okay. All right. So I'm reporting on the period of 2020 and 21. The funds you've granted us were for the period of June, oh, excuse me, July 1, 2020 through 2021, June. So nineteen, or excuse me, 2020, it was a year with highs, lows, and, as we all know, COVID-19. It started as an exceptionally great year for us at the museum, and we went from full speed to full stop. So our grant kind of takes in three distinct phases. One is total closure. One is certifying and reopening as a retail only, and finally a phased reopening. And during each of these challenging and rapidly evolving phases, city funding helped us provide stability and support to continue our mission to collect, preserve, and exhibit the history and Danish culture of Solvang and to promote the arts. So you see in front of you a few of the kind of ups and downs on that bumpy ride to, through the end of the year. So while we were closed, we used that time in productive operations, and we reimagined all the museum stays spaces and updated everything. Every item was cleaned, every sign was replaced with new and updated informations, and all stages, spaces were restaged for social distancing. We continued to care for the historic building, and during that time, we replaced Jorin, that's the fragile and iconic kind of terracotta sculpture at the front entry. He is now replaced with a brand-new bronze replica. We also worked towards a green business certification and moved forward as a museum team to work with professionals on plans to renovate the grounds and create a larger and more accessible community space with green infrastructure to capture solar power and to manage and conserve water. And you'll be hearing more about that. So the buzzwords of COVID, pivot, be nimble, stay connected. So we looked for ways to do that, and of course, virtual outreach was something new for us in a big way and something that actually is a good thing that's come out of COVID. We also opened our art gallery, which was close to the public, to host an artisan residence who used the space as her studio. We partnered with area museums for information and also to present a blood drive. It was a virtual blood drive that was quite successful. Our solstice fundraiser became an un-party, so we had no party fundraiser that also was quite successful. And we became a founding member of the Environmental Alliance of Santa Barbara County Museums. And to that end, I am working with the Danish Embassy on programming for 2022 that will focus on Greenland. We stayed connected with our community and grew our outreach. Here's some examples. Our book, The Skull Solvang, 110, celebrating 110 years of Solvang. We also did This Day in Solvang History. We did a virtual exhibition, The Art of Face Mask, including Instagram Live talks. And also during the closure, we were able to capture the media spotlight and bring both national and international attention to Solvang with our critically acclaimed exhibition, Legacy of Decency, Rembrandt Jews and Danes. And that came and went, came back for two weekends, went again, and returned in right around Easter, and has just been returned as we finally get ready for a new exhibition. Okay, let's see. So I continued to work with the media during this time, and we often provide cultural historical information as well as resources for the local agency, residents, businesses, visitors, as well as the media. And here's a couple of the high-profile things that you may have seen or will be seeing here in the near future. So finally, 54 weeks of being closed, and we reopened on Easter weekend. We have visitors in our upgraded, reimagined, and squeaky-clean spaces. It's been a phased reopening. We started at three days a week, and in June, we moved to five days a week. And fortunately, our staff is absolutely fabulous. We have a few volunteers who've returned, but the Delta variant has scared them away. So what is usually 75 volunteers is more like 25 volunteers right now. And that makes a big difference because it's been busy, very, very busy. Record-setting numbers of visitors coming to the museum as we operate under the Santa Barbara County Health Department guidelines. Of course, masks are required at this time again. And we are dedicated to being as accessible to diverse populations as possible. And to that end, we offer free admission to all of our visitors. And city funding definitely helps make this possible. We've also added early hour appointments for immunocompromised people and those with special needs, and that's been a really popular item. So it's the hour before we open, we make appointments. We participate in programs that allow and offer and encourage visitors. One of those is Museums for All. That's a federal agency program that is done in association with children's museums that offers free admission. We're a Blue Star museum, offering admission and act to active military families. We work with the library to provide prizes for their summer reading club. So I'm excited that we finally have some new artwork coming into the gallery. This will be the first since COVID. The art on view focuses on the sites and structures located on the nearly 9,000-acre parcel that was purchased in 1911 to establish this Danish colony we now know as Solvang. The land extended far beyond our present-day city boundaries, and along with the layers of history, it provides the inspiration for this new exhibition. And of course, I'd love to see you all there. We're actually going to have an in-person event on September 25th. And then we're looking forward to the year ahead, but we're also continuing to celebrate our historic roots. Here's a 1912 photo. And here's us today. Thank you for your support. I have a more complete report here for each of you and one for Xena as well. And questions, if you have them.
Are there any questions from the council? I have none. That is excellent, as always. Thank you for all that you do for the community with the Elveroi.
Thank you for your support. Look forward to seeing you. Good evening.
For a cloud. All right. And then we have one final presentation would be from Hidden Wings.
Yes, I believe we just have a video. I'm gonna go ahead and start it. You can have my screen on, please. Let's try again. Not hearing sound. There's no sound.
Hidden Wings and audio. Uh, is it turned up on your computer, Olay?
Yes. Oh, sorry. No sound.
All right. For some of you that aren't familiar, Hidden Wings is kind of a school and a program that is offered right here on Adderdag in downtown Solvang. It's specifically for students and young adults to try to help them bridge that gap from high school and all the services that they get in school to growing up to be young adults and trying to actually be productive. It's a very great organization. It's put together by Pastor Jim Billington and his wife, Julia. And that was put together by Ryan Abbott, one of the students or young adults that has been there for about the past six months, and they're very grateful for the city of Solvang, to the city of Solvang for providing the park that they actually go to. And so that was what prompted that and some suggestions that he had done. So I told him I would put that together for him. I see a hand raised, and I'm wondering if that is actually Ryan. Is there in Zoom?
We've seen Galaxy 801 hand raised. Is that something?
Hi, guys.
Hi, Ryan.
How you doing, Ryan?
Not good. Yeah, I'm obviously thankful for the, for the city there, obviously, with your new contributions of the pick-up awards and everything. So thank you for that. You know, I, we went walking today, and I was looking at some of the things that I, I was kind of shocked that they're. But it's, it's past the pick-up awards where the empty lot is, where there's large bins of dried up wood and everything. It, it, I don't, is that actually gonna be cleaned up, none of it? Or more presentable? It looks right now, it's like almost people are dumping, dumping, dumping things there, like an old barbecue pit over there. And then there's, you know, there's, there are signs from the city of Solvang in my, that are sitting over there. So that's just one thing I noticed that might look there, you know, if it ever got cleaned up.
Thank, we'll look into that.
Mayor, if I may, we do have a major project going forward with already adopted budget this year, including some grant funding that will definitely be addressing all of the issues that you're talking about. So I look forward to those improvements.
Again, Ryan, thank you for those suggestions. I know you're according, you're a big user of the day trips, according to Jenny. And for all of you that may or may not know, Ryan is also one of the cashiers at Valley Fresh, so just, so you're all familiar with that.
The best cashier at Valley Fresh.
The one I go to.
Thank you, Robert.
You're welcome, Ryan. All right.
So yeah, I don't, you know, that's just one of those, Hidden Wings to me is, is a place that I feel like I should be there. You know, a lot, not a lot of people know that I'm autistic, but during COVID is when I got my official diagnosis of autism. So it's, I've been going there on and off for two years, but it's officially been six months at Hidden Wings.
Well, we're glad that you're going, and we're glad that the Billingtons have put that together for all of the students and young adults in the autism spectrum. So thank you again for presenting. Appreciate it.
And there is, there is a letter, if you want me to send them out to you guys, in the email, in the email, you know, an article that was printed recently, so.
If you could send that to me, and I'll make sure that gets out.
Okay, well the.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right.
All right, now, if there's any public communications. Madam Clerk, if you'd read this part in the agenda.
Public communications, non-agenda and consent agenda items, written or verbal. The council welcomes your input. At this time, you may address the council on items not on the agenda and consent calendar. Time limit is three minutes. We have in-person speaker number one, Kim Jensen. Would you like to come forward, Kim?
Mr. Mayor, the councilman. I'm just here representing the city, or representing the Vikings charity group. We have a blood drive on the 21st and 22nd of next week, and I'm looking for everyone to participate, as many that can be there would appreciate it. Every two seconds, someone needs, requires some blood. Every 15 seconds, someone needs, it's somewhere in the, they need platelets. If we can be heroes in some way or another by just donating one hour of our time to be with a nurse here at San Andreas, at the vets' hall, and contribute one pint of blood, or if more, you can do that with the platelets, you can make a big difference. We could save over 1,000 lives. One pint of blood represents three people that can be saved. And I think it's real important that here in this community, the Vikings have continued. And I'm just one of many people that have come forward to ask that, we always ask the Valley to be a participant, and they all, by talent now, comes here, and they do this twice a year. This is our second drive. And if everyone can participate, we can make a big difference. That's all I ask. Everyone be there. It's next Tuesday and Wednesday, 2 o'clock till 6:30.
Where, Kim? At the vets hall?
The vets hall.
The 21st and 22nd.
21st, 22nd, Tuesday and Wednesday.
Are you going to come, Robert? Because I'm going to be volunteering there, and I'd be glad to stick a needle in your arm.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you for all that the Vikings do as well.
Our next person that would like to speak is Eric Hutchins. Would you like to come forward, sir?
Councilperson, in the interest of brevity, I'm going to read from a letter, and also to rescue you from a first draft, and then I'll just distribute the letter to you. This concerns the appointment of someone that I believe is imminently unqualified to serve even on an advisory committee for this town. And I would state it as such, passing over the appointment of intelligent adults with years and sometimes decades of retail business experience to appoint a 16-year-old to this community's most economically important advisory committee defies both common sense and wisdom. This action raises the question, is the appointment of someone imminently unqualified to sit on a key advisory council instead of any one of several highly qualified candidates evidence of some new political fad or fashion? Should we, for example, start encouraging 12- to 16-year-olds to vote in local elections or run for local office? I urge the Solvang City Council to uphold the public trust and to avoid the appearance of impropriety by appointing the best qualified individuals to its committees. Further, I urge the council to rescind the appointment of this undoubtedly gifted 16-year-old and refrain from appointing anyone else to its advisory committees that by virtue of age is far less qualified than others seeking to serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next person to speak is Matt Vanderlinden. Would you like to come forward, sir?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Yurk and council members. Matt Vanderlinden, you are Public Works Director and Utilities Director. So I've come forward this evening during the public comment period to announce my upcoming retirement. And I have a brief written statement I would like to read, if you don't mind. Dear Mayor Yurk, council members, city manager, city attorney, new city clerk, and other coworkers, and Solvang residents, I thought it would be simpler and clear to announce my retirement to all of you at the same time. I'm so very thankful for having been given the opportunity 11 years ago to come work for the city of Solvang as your Public Works Director and City Engineer. When I arrived, the average term of prior Solvang Public Works Directors was less than two years. And the longest term ever served by a previous Public Works Director was only four years. I'm proud to say I never backed away from any challenge, and I've worked hard to complete many difficult long-term projects and bring true progress to the city of Solvang. I was blessed to have several talented, dedicated, and hard-working coworkers. None of my accomplishments would have been possible without their support and teamwork. But now, after 11 years and many accomplishments, I plan to retire on December 31st of this year, 2021. In a few weeks, I will be submitting my paperwork to CalPERS. Although I'm leaving, I'm committed to the city of Solvang's success and would like to leave the city in a strong position with a smooth transition. That's why I'm giving over three months' notice of my retirement. This should allow for a smooth transition and proper handoff of projects. I would, I would hate to see any of the critical long-term projects get sidetracked or fall by the wayside, such as Phase Two and Three of the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, amendment of the city's river wells permit, the pavement management program, the stormwater management program, the San Inez Valley Transit, the municipal facilities master plan, implementation of the groundwater sustainability plan, update of our water master plan, and renewal of the wastewater treatment plant waste discharge permit, just to name a few. I plan to engage in this process through December to aid in the success of your new Public Works and Utilities Directors. Should you desire my assistance after that, I will be happy to assist the city in a limited capacity. In closing, thank you again for the opportunity to serve you. I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
I believe that's the end of public comments, sir.
That's the written public comments from here.
That is the written public comments from here.
Do you want to say anything first before I move it out?
Yeah, just one thing. I wanted to talk to Matt for a second. Since I became involved with the city at all, Matt has been the one who I would go to if I had questions about almost anything. And I'm saddened here that you're going to leave. I understand, but just wanted to say thanks.
You're very welcome. I guess I'd like to just say the same thing, Matt. I've been here a lot longer than Councilmember Infante, and we share the offices occasionally, and a lot of special events and maps and all that type of stuff. So, again, you've been, to me, the, sometimes the glue that's held this city together, and I really appreciate that. You're welcome.
Matt, I have a very large poster in my office of the water system in California, and I think about it and you all the time because you taught me most, and the late Fred Cobal, everything I need to know about water in the state of California and in the city of Solvang. And thank you. You've helped me a lot.
Yeah, Matt, thank you for talking with me when I first started this endeavor and bringing me up to speed on the issues that you've overseen, and I appreciate your, your help since then as well. Good luck.
Thank you. So that, that was the end of the written. Are there any in-house that would like to speak on matters, again, that are not on the agenda or only on the consent calendar that are in the audience? Seeing none? Do we have any out in Zoom or on telephone?
If anybody on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand on Zoom or unmute yourself. No public comment.
All right. We'll bring it back, and we'll move now to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. If we can have my screen up, today we are welcoming, actually, now we can show Anna Marie herself right here, with its first announcement being that we have Anna Marie Porter has joined the city just two weeks ago, and this is her first public meeting of the year. I would like to just, if you can show us, read a little bit about Anna Marie's background, where she comes from, and introduce her to the council and the community. Anna Marie Porter is a dedicated public servant with years of experience in the public and private sector, working in the cities of Upland, Redonda Beach, Arroyo Grande, Duarte, and now here in Solvang. She earned her Certified Municipal Clerk's Designation, CMC, in 2018. Her positions, in addition to the city clerk, included working in community development, planning building as a counter technician, agenda management, records management, public records request administration, contract management, and city clerk consulting services. On a personal note, she volunteers with multiple nonprofits in their silent auction fundraising efforts, primarily with animals, the military, and religious organizations. She has three adult children and a variety of critters, all who are in Southern California. Anna Marie is extremely passionate about the city clerk profession and is thrilled to have been offered the opportunity to join the city of Solvang's team as our new city clerk. So welcome, Anna Marie.
Thank you. You're very welcome. I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you.
We are glad to have you. Thank you.
Just speak louder.
That's it. Don't be shy.
First direction. Okay. So I would like to give you a brief city manager report today, just to keep everybody updated on where we are and where we're going with some of the major projects that we are working on at the city. During the last council meetings, joint with the Planning Commission, you did approve the 10 guiding principles that you adopted that will guide us through the rest of the general plan development. The next steps in the general plan development will be begin the initial evaluation of the alternatives. We have a G-PAC meeting scheduled at the end of September to really dive into those issues. The G-PAC is your advisory, or is an advisory committee to this process, who will be taking a first look in detail at proposed alternatives. Then the consultant will begin the preparation of an alternatives report, which will be presented to the community at the workshop number three on alternatives, which is tentative scheduled for November 4th, 2021. Selection of preferred alternatives will then take place in early calendar year of 2022. So this is a major milestone. We're definitely looking forward to it. We've been engaging over the last six-plus months with the community, receiving various points of data. Very glad to have the 10 guiding principles that will be very essential to us in development of the different, all of the elements of the general plan. So look forward to the community's discussion on November 4th at the workshop number three, and also at all of the G-PAC's input that we will receive prior to that. On communications, you have your next edition for the fall season of the quarterly newsletter going out to the community at the end of this month with the utility bills. And we also have, we will also be outreach in very much with a targeted outreach to our community to really spread the word about the declaration of the city of Solvang on the drought-two stage and the mandatory conservation requirements on that. Now, Tourism Advisory Committee has been seated. They held their first meeting on September 9th, just last week. The members are Tracy Beard, Alexander Granier, Max Hinder, Kim Jensen, John Martino, Barrett Prescott, and Sherry Schallenberger. Their next meeting is scheduled to be for the end of September, when they will really dive into the marketing strategy and development of the next RFP for a marketing contract, which is expiring on December 31st. But they did provide with different advice and comments on the proposed UFF program, which will be introduced to you later this evening. Design Review Committee is meeting later this week. Just a couple of notable projects that they are reviewing as a preliminary review, which may require, which will require planning commission review afterwards and may require some of the council actions, are a project for 11 short-term rental cottages that is proposed by the SEMAS, the same owners as Lansby, to where they would like to create short-term cottages with a pool full use of their guests as well as guests that would stay at this facility. They all, there is also a proposal right next to the Attledag Square to create a space for a watchable court and a wine tasting. So these two projects will be reviewed in concept by the DRC, but there is certain requirements for parking, et cetera, that might come to council consideration at future meetings. We are continuing to enforce the sign ordinance enforcement. That is something that your council wanted to lift some of the restrictions that existed during COVID-19, so we are focusing on the downtown area. I do plan on bringing this forward to the DRC for further comment and advice in terms of our sign enforcement, and then reporting back to council on our efforts with that. A little shout-out to recreation. We have, A, an event scheduled, the Solvang Skate Jam Contest for September 25th, and the Haunted House is also back. So we have our Parks and Recreation, or Recreation Division working on the Haunted House. The Theater Fest is closed at this point. There was a break-in ceremony this morning, actually, to where construction is kicking off. So the Theater Fest, where the Haunted House is usually held, is not going to be available, but staff has been creative in having a solution for this, to have a Haunted House that will be a little bit smaller behind the Annex Building this year. We have a few staff promotions that were caused by the budget adoption and the reorganization of our organizational chart. So we have a few employees who have been appointed to new positions. One was Jenny McClerk, who is now our Recreation Supervisor. Andrew Quinn has been appointed to the Lead Water Operation, and Debbie Curtis is transitioning into the Accounting Technician position. Just once again, reminding that we have a few recruitments going on. We have the Plane Manager, Human Resources Manager, Recreation Coordinator, Associate Engineer are all open, and we are also working on reorganization of the Public Works Department with Public Works and Utility Direction Director position, which will be open for recruitment. Anna Marie is here with us for the city clerk, and we also have Assistant Planner coming onboard at the end of September and plan on having the Annex across the street here where the Plankin Building is located reopen to the public again, so that it won't be just by appointment only again. Advanced calendar, in September and October, some of the notable items that will be coming to council are the Marketing RFP, Sign Ordinance Management, Parking Improvement, Fiscal Year 21/22 Quarter One Financial Report, Wastewater Treatment Plant Phase Three Recycled Water, and Government Logo Considerations, which will be discussed at the DRC meeting first, and then will be returned to the city council. And that concludes my report.
All right. Are there any questions in the staff report? Seeing none? Move on to item number three.
Council comments, requests, and advanced calendar. Comments and requests from the city council members. No action will be taken at this meeting.
Councilmember Infante.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick comment about the fact that the Groundwater Sustainability Plan is open for public comment. Okay, this is the, the plan that's out there that is going to establish how we're going to try and make sure that we have enough water to survive for a while. It's currently an estimate of 1,830 acre-feet a year as an average deficit in the eastern management area of the Groundwater Sustainability Plan that we're dealing with. Usage by Solvang and a few of the domestic wells in the area is an average of about 2,100 acre-feet a year, or about 14% of the total EMA usage. What's happening here is that agriculture uses most of the water. We understand that. About 78% is the calculation. The EMA groundwater is going to have a lot to do with what happens in the future. It's very important that the GSA receive the input from the residential stakeholders on this. The comment period ends October 24th. You can get, make comments at the website, which is santainezwater.org. I highly recommend you take a look at this, comment on it if you have it. It's huge, I got to tell you right now. It's 630-something pages, I think. But it literally lays out what the penalties are if we get too low in the water, what happens, who's going to get, who's going to be held responsible, what, what are all the different options? So please, take a chance, take some time and take a look at that if you would. So please, take a chance, take some time and take a look at that if you would. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time? Go ahead, Councilmember.
I just, I wasn't planning on it, but regarding the TAC, the Tourism Advisory Committee, and the staff, the appointees, I wasn't responsible for appointing a sixteen-year-old to that, but I did say at the very beginning, I would like somebody who has nothing to do with the DRC as a voice on that committee. So I think that might be part of what, maybe some of the thinking was, because we have some extremely qualified people, and it's a shame we couldn't have more, but I prefer, I would have liked to have had just a resident, I wasn't thinking about a sixteen-year-old at the time, but a resident who had nothing to do with the DRC, but the things that happened in the DRC affect residents that aren't in the DRC. So I thought it'd be nice to have that voice, so maybe that's part of the thinking. Secondly, and last, we lost a wonderful, wonderful person on Friday night, Petty Fow. I don't know if you remember her. She was my son, who's in college now, her first, his first grade teacher. If you remember, if you don't remember her face, you probably remember her dressed up in her Danish outfit, doing the Lego tent at Danish Days for, I don't know how many years. I've only been here seventeen years, and she's been in that tent, doing the Legos, working with the kids every single Danish Days. Of course, we missed it. She, she fought an extremely courageous battle with cancer, and she lost it Friday night. And if we could just please all keep her to the citizens of Solvang, think about her, and keep her in your prayers, and think good thoughts, and she was, she was a blessing to this town. Thank you.
Very mindful, I could probably do it on the phone rather than do it here, but going over the expense report, one thing that stuck out to me, I didn't understand on page seven, is Platinum Plus for Business for seventy-four hundred dollars. Can you tell me what that, what that is?
On page seven?
Page seven.
Seventy-four fifty-three fourteen, is that the amount?
Seven thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars, right.
Yeah, that's a credit card bill. So the city has credit cards, which are used by a number of staff under their spending authority for purchasing policy. All of those receipts are turned into our county department, which then pays for the credit card as one invoice.
Okay, that makes sense. I'm thinking Platinum Plus for.
It's only a June.
All right. And I'll just finalize, I'd like to also talk about what Councilmember Clark had mentioned about Petty Fow. I know I had three kids that went through Solvang School, and I believe she was a teacher to at least two of the three, and very well-loved in, at Solvang School and in the community, and I know she will be missed. If you can all just keep her family in your thoughts and prayers, that would be much appreciated. Did want to update just real quick. Coming this Wednesday, we're going to have the Solvang Library's new virtual book club will be opening up, so just wanted to mention that to you. It's open to kids, kids ages nine through twelve in the San Andres Valley, and we'll meet two Wednesday afternoon per month at four P.M. The first meeting is this Wednesday, and the following will be on September 29th. And the goal is to have fun exploring new books, new ideas, and different perspectives. So that's just one of the programs that is offered at the library right now for children. And then updating on the food bank. On August 21st, there were two hundred and eighty-two households, served one thousand eighty-three individuals, fifty-six for the first time, and that was August 24th. August 20, 31st, there were two hundred and twenty-seven households, a total of nine hundred and twenty-five individuals. First-time recipients were fifty-four. And last Tuesday, there were two hundred and twenty households, a total of eight hundred and fifty-seven. So while most of us have been able to continue to move on through COVID and everything, there are still a significant amount of folks in our community that have food insecurities, and we are very grateful for the food bank and for Bethania, particularly for stepping up and taking care of those. So thank you all. I did have a couple of meetings I attended. Actually, one meeting in particular was the SB CAG meeting. We requested the, an Easy Bike Project pop-up, which will be coming on, I believe it's this Saturday, the September 18th, it will be behind the Cork, and it's basically where anybody can try out for free an extended amount of time on an electric bicycle. I think there's fifteen different varieties to try out, and it's basically just to try to give everyone an opportunity without any type of purchase obligations, or just an opportunity to be able to try something out that is actually great for your health and significant for your environment, our environment here in Solvang. I had a meeting also on Thursday with Congressman Carvahal, and he was talking about some of the items that are coming up, one of which will be a three-point-five-trillion-dollar federal budget reconciliation bill that will be coming, starting fiscal year 2022. And a lot of that, there are a number of programs that are in that, that will be, hopefully, will be able to utilize here in Solvang to help with our infrastructure and broadband moving forward. I think that was about all that I had, and I think that's it.
Moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is designed for routine administrative city manners and is approved by roll call vote with one motion. First on the agenda, approval of agenda as presented. Approve warrants, counts payable and receivables for August 2021. Approve minutes of the special joint and regular meeting of August 23rd, 2021. Approve and adopt the resolution to accept the State of Good Repair Program fiscal year 21, 22, Fairbox funding. Approve the project list and authorize the city manager to apply for and accept State of Good Repair Program funds and execute any necessary funding and contractual documents.
Any councilmembers have any items that they have any questions on or would wish to pull at this time? And I keep forgetting Claudia out there. Do you have any items at this time? No? You're on mute.
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second. But I was waiting for you to pull something.
All right. Councilmember Clark would be the second on that one, I think.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Clark.
Yes.
Councilmember Infante.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Arona.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Mayor Yuric.
Yes. Moving on to item number five.
Continued public hearings. This is a resolution adopting updated general fund user and regulatory fees. Staff recommends that the City Council hold a public hearing continued from August 9th, 2021, and adopt the proposed resolution with updated fees to be effective November 15, 2021.
Council, you received a rather lengthy presentation in fair detail on this item on August 9th, at which point this item was continued. Here today, we have consultants with us available if you have any questions. We have made some clarifications to the document, some additional notes, per your prior comments, and the document has been available for public review this whole entire time, and we are asking that you consider adopting the resolution today, which would adopt, place these new fees in effect sixty days from the date of adoption, and will raise significantly the revenue for us by recouping the costs that we are otherwise spending from taxpayer dollars within the general fund operations, and would help us by approximately three hundred thousand dollars a year in additional revenue that we have not been recouping because the fees have not been updated since 2005. So this is definitely recommended to you. If you have any additional questions, myself and the consultant are here to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions further from the council?
No questions.
All right. Seeing none up here, is there any comments from the public that are in house? In the audience?
I have one question.
I'm sorry?
On page sixty-seven, on the user and regulation fees, where it's an appeal to City Council. An appeal to City Council costs fifteen hundred dollars? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes. Councilmember, honestly, you're reading that correctly.
Isn't that why we're here, so people can come and appeal?
It is standard to have, for certain issues, an appeal fee, so there is different procedures since the attorney can discuss it further.
There's a significant amount of staff work and time that goes into appeals that come to the City Council, not the least of which is legal review, to make sure that the legal ramifications have been addressed in any staff reports. So it's not simply that the appeal gets filed and it comes to the City Council. We make a professional recommendation, whether to sustain the appeal, overturn the appeal, and provide the backup and the documentation on why the appeal should either be sustained or otherwise. So it's, obviously, it's an estimate of the time and energy that will go into it, but I would say in my experience with other cities, that amount is not unusual for an appeal of that type to the.
Thank you for the clarification, Council.
All right. Any other questions in the audience? Seeing none. Any out on Zoom? Seeing none. Bring it back to the council for a motion.
I could like to add one thing, is that we, Solvang hasn't raised any of these rates since 2005. We were at the twelve to fifteen percent, if I'm not mistaken, for what we recovered at that time. We compared ourselves to several different cities, and we, even with these increases, we are still below the rest of the cities in this, in this county for, for the actual cost of covering whatever specific actions the residents want or whatever. So we didn't, we didn't go extremely high, and I think that's reasonable, to not have something updated for sixteen years. We kept it as lean as could be.
Thank you for those comments.
That's an issue in itself, so.
But then, the next question then becomes, if you look at some of these fees that are going to jump a lot, should they happen all at once? Should we split it out over two years? If you take a look at just Bets Hall or the park and the fees that people will have to pay to use those facilities, they go from what I would call very moderate to up there ways. And so I don't disagree that we need to recover a lot of our costs. This will do a lot for us. And to go through individually and say this one doesn't, that's what I choked on two meetings ago, is why I objected to this immediately until I had the time to spend on it, and I've looked through it a lot, and I think we need to do it. So the only question I have for you is, do we do it all at once, or do we do it, say, spread across two years?
I appreciate that, too, and also, and the reason we extended this is because to give the public more time to comment on it, and we're not.
And nobody's commented.
And we're not getting any, any pushback, if you will. I would like to just get it over with.
And Council, to respond to some of the Councilmember Infante's comments, some of the rates were raised a little bit more aggressively, for example, on building and Plankside. A lot of their other rates, such as parks and recreation, whatnot, are being phased in, and we are really taking kind of baby steps to, so that we can start to catch up over time to closer or higher levels of recovery. And obviously, with recreation and parks, those fees are being kept very low. We are definitely not shooting anywhere, even close to fifty percent recovery, even with these increases.
I also seem to remember that parks and the facilities for the parks and things like that actually have been updated.
Parks, the only one that was.
Five, five or six years ago, as opposed to the two thousand, yeah, two thousand five.
You're correct.
Is there a motion?
In that case, I'll move that we accept the updated general fund user and regulatory piece.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Arona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
Yes.
Moving on to public hearings, item number six.
Public hearing to consider electric trolley license application. Staff recommends that council hold a public hearing for Municipal Code Title 4, Chapter 12, to consider electric trolley license application from Horace Entertainment LLC. Due to continued review of the application, staff recommends continuing the public hearing to September 27th, regular City Council meeting.
By way of just a little bit of background, if you would remember that this was a new ordinance, a new chapter to the municipal code that was recently added regulating electric trolleys. This is the first application the city has ever received. It was noticed for today, so the recommendation, because we are still in the process of review of the application with public safety and CHP to ensure that the vehicles are fully in compliance, as well as reviewing the routes, so we're still working with applicant. I expect that we probably will be able to have this completed and in front of you for the September 27th regular council meeting. So the recommendation tonight is just to continue the public hearing so that the notices are all already in place, and it doesn't need to be re-noticed, and you will hear this again on September 27th.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Correct, yes.
Can we get a motion to continue this to?
Yeah, make a recommendation.
Are we taking public comment on it? I apologize. Excuse me, Mr. Eric.
We are going to take public comment on it, or we're going to bring it back from the 27th, once we actually finalize.
The recommendation is to continue it to the 27th, but if there are members of the public who wish to speak on it at this point, they certainly could do that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember.
And you've got somebody there that wants to speak.
We'll start, we don't have any written requests, so the firsthand I saw was in the back. Is that Ms. Sony?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
There's only one thing that I'd like to mention on that. I think it's very pertinent that we do have electric trolleys or some type of transportation on moving forward. My only concern would be is that if this is one trolley, are there other applications that, for electric vehicles, that we might consider? I know we had spoken, and I remember Mr. Clark or Councilman Carr might have heard this comment, when we talked about having transportation and having trolleys, there seemed to be a size problem versus some smaller entities, where we were looking at multiple transportation that could go from location-to-location businesses and could let people off, whether they had tickets or not, in stations. That would be my thought, not whether we license an electric trolley or a smaller entity. What I would like to see as emergent would be to have accessibility of a transportation system, whether it was in Veterans Hall or wherever out, that the people that were parking could feel that they had the utilization of something favorable to them. And that would be what I would like to say, bringing forward. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Sir?
Benny Casco, Solvang business owner, dear mayor, City Council. I have some questions about the trolley that which nobody seems to be able to answer within the city. I'd like to point out that my questions are not in relation to the original Danish trolley, but rather pertaining to the limited liability company called Horsey's Entertainment LLC. That is the applicant on tonight's agenda. One, does Horsey's Entertainment LLC provide parking spaces for its business or pay twelve thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars in lieu of parking, as stipulated in tonight's agenda package on page sixty-six, which you, I think, just approved, like any other business? And how is that calculated? Two, does Horsey's Entertainment LLC pay a fee for the public parking spaces it occupies for pickup and use for parking? And how much, and how is that calculated? Three, does the exterior look of all Horsey's Entertainment LLC vehicles go through a DRC approval process like any other business exterior? Four, does all exterior advertising on Horsey's Entertainment LLC vehicles go through a DRC approval process? I don't think. I don't think any other business is allowed to turn our buildings or vehicles into mobile advertising billboards. I know some of us get fined. I have nothing against the original Danish trolley. It's historic, it's cultural, and it's popular. But we're no longer talking about just the original Danish trolley. We're talking about a fleet of vehicles owned by Horsey's Entertainment LLC, which is self-cultured, a fleet on page two twenty-one. A fleet which is asking for permission to operate up to four slow-moving vehicles twelve hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year within the TRC, on page two twenty-two. A fleet that specifically needs route on public streets to drive on and public parking spaces to pick up from in Solvay. A fleet that is directly struggling with the closure of Copenhagen Drive. Councilmember Infantis reinforced it at the last meeting, and a Horsey Entertainment LLC employee previously in the public comments, the fleet has problems operating through the alley because of the closure of Copenhagen Drive. The closure is specifically and directly affecting the business, its business. A fleet which is owned by Horsey's Entertainment LLC, of which Mayor Proterm is the managing member, and has listed it on Form seven hundred, having a fair market value between a hundred thousand dollars to a million dollars, and from which she gets income between ten K and a hundred thousand dollars a year. If you can answer yes to all these four questions, that means that Horsey's Entertainment LLC is subject to the same rules as the rest of us when it comes to parking and DRC. I also think that some of us would like to be ensured that there are no conflicts of interest in the room when parking, traffic, and Copenhagen closure is discussed. Thank you. Oh, I have a fifth question. Does Horsey's Entertainment LLC have a city granted monopoly for operating motorized and horse-drawn bus services within the TRC? Thank you.
Thank you. Got down those questions?
I have all those questions, Mayor.
There you go. Thank you. We'll make sure we have some of those addressed at the actual next public hearing on it. Do we have any other public comment? Those are the only two that I saw initially in-house, and there's, doesn't appear to be any out in Zoom. We'll bring it back and just move on to the second, the next item, seven.
We'll still need to get direction from the council to move it to the September twenty-seventh meeting.
Is there a motion to continue to the September twenty-seventh meeting?
I'll make a motion to continue item seven on the, I'm sorry, item six on the council agenda this evening to September twenty-seventh.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infantis?
Yes.
Mayor Proterm Aruna?
Astine.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urick?
Yes.
All right, moving on to regular business agenda, item number seven, please.
Review proposals for the, for the visitor center management and approved contract. Staff recommends that you review, review the proposal for the visitor center management and authorize the city manager to execute, execute the contract with selected vendor. The recommended contract term is October thirty-one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Is there a staff report?
I have a brief staff report. As you would recall, the current visitor center contract is expiring at the end of September. Per your prior direction, we had issued a request for proposals for the visitor center management contract, which is attached as attachment A for your review. We received a total of three applications, which are also attached to this report. One is from the Central Coast Marketing, who are the current operator of the visitor center under contract that's expiring. The second one is from the Chamber of Commerce, and then we also have a proposal from IDK. Staff has done some preliminary review of these applications. All of the applicants are qualified for administering the services. There is a summary on page two twenty-nine for you that just kind of summarizes the proposed number of hours and the costs per hour for those operations, as well as total costs as proposed. So staff recommends selecting one of these applicants as we are currently in the middle of September, and this contract is expiring, so the contract will need to be extended, or new contract would need to be formed.
So are there any questions of the staff report?
I believe we have all of the applicants are here with us. If you would like them to give you a brief presentation of their proposals.
I think that would be probably the most feasible thing to do. So we'll just start in the order, we'll start off with Brenda, Central Coast Marketing. Do we need a time limit on this part, or is this where?
It's, it's up to you.
Just be a presentation.
Yeah.
How much time do you think you need, Brenda?
I think I can do it in three to five minutes.
Let's go, let's do five.
Thank you, Mayor Urick, and council members. It's an honor to speak to you this evening. It has also been an honor for myself and my family to operate the Solving Visitor Center since September of two thousand and nineteen. As you know, I was involved in the destination marketing organization in Solving since two thousand and six. I lost my job when that was defunded on July thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. At the end of August, the city called me and asked me if I would step in and operate the visitor center. I was absolutely stunned, so I said, let me think about it. I asked my husband, and he said, I think that'll be a great family project. I think we'll have fun with it, and let's go for it. So we stepped in, and initially it was going to be for one week while they figured out what to do with the visitor center. But we jumped in with our whole heart, and we started with a visitor center that had absolutely nothing in it except walls. Even the telephones had been removed. So we limped along and decorated and put our whole heart into it as best we could. And at the end of the week, they offered me to come with a proposal. I did have a proposal, and when I took it to my lawyer for review, he told me the price was not high enough. I hadn't considered what happens when minimum wage goes up, what, how are you going to cover sick leave, and some additional things. However, I went ahead with the price until the first of November, when I requested an increase. And I again created a proposal, and I was given that increase. So to make a long story short, this is now my sixth time to present a proposal to you, and I would just like to stand on my record and say we've done an awesome job. We've done our very best, we've put our whole heart into it. I do use Elveroi Museum, we've gone on three tours of that. Esther's given us one of the walkthroughs, extensive history training. And the last one we did a couple months ago with Linda Palmer. And again, she went through the whole intensive history training. We also use Esther's book, The Spirit of Solving, for references for history, and polyhistory and culture are super important to solving. Our main purpose of the visitor center is to get people to return and to stay longer when they're here. We always keep that uppermost in mind. Our job is to share without partiality all of the businesses in Solving, because we want people to know all the wonderful things that are here. The attractions, the shops, the museums, things to do, things to taste, things to eat. I do create a dining guide, which I do hand-deliver around to all the hotels on a quarterly basis. And aside, I would also like to request that I could put that, a, a large format of that in the Centennial Plaza, because there is a bulletin board there that's vacant, and I think that would be a very helpful piece of information to have there along with a monthly calendar. I'd be glad to provide those to you. As far as Danish costumes, as I put in my proposal, the Danish folk costumes were mostly worn from the seventeen fifties to the early nineteen hundreds, and they were mostly homemade. So our costumes are homemade, they are made by myself. We all have a costume. I'd like to eventually create a second costume for everybody, because it's a little difficult to wear my costume all week. However, illness no longer makes costumes for the staff for what we needed, and the European uniform place is no longer in business either, so that also encouraged me to make the uniforms. I think that's pretty much all I have to say. I just would like to thank Solving for giving me the opportunity. We've so enjoyed it, and we would like to continue. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Is there any questions, Brenda?
No, thank you, Brenda.
All right.
Thank you so much, Brenda, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Just go down in order, the chamber, Solving chamber?
Hello, good evening, Mayor, council members, and council on the Zoom. We do feel our plan stands on its own as an economic driver and for an economic development program for this community. We do truly feel that we need a Solving After Dark program. We do need, the visitor center must stay open later hours to support the downtown and to support the hotels. And we want a long-term future for this project. So we would like to, you know, have this available, and we're happy to be part of Solving at any level that the council sees fit to use. And I think our proposal fit in that we understood that we had to have insurance all the way around, and we had to have employees that were under the, what we want to call the normal payroll system. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there any questions? Nope, okay. Sue Mees Scott, IDK? Or Susan?
Ladies, lady, and gentlemen of the council, thanks for having us. Scott Schumake, managing member of IDK Events. I want to start by thanking Brenda and her family for doing a fantastic job of running the visitor center over the last few months, or almost over here now, I guess. As you know, I think I've said to all of you multiple times, I have no desire to run your visitor center, but as your tourism marketing coordinator, we hired an account coordinator a few months ago who has some experience running your visitor center. And she came to us and said, look, I think we can do a really good job with this. We already have the infrastructure in place from a business standpoint. We have, obviously, accounting staff, payroll staff, an ungodly amount of insurance for the, for the work that we have to do, and a very willing employee who would like to tell you a little bit about her experience running the visitor center and what she believes that she and, and some of our other employees can bring to your visitor center in Solving. That being said, as your marketing coordinator, I'm very excited to work with whoever is in that visitor center. I personally believe that the visitor center is a very important tool in the overall marketing mix. I think that, you know, digital is, is incredibly important. I do disagree in a couple, that I don't think our, our visitor center here in Solving needs a big digital presence. I think that people who come to the visitor center here are looking for an escape from that. And I think an investment in digital doesn't make a lot of sense, since we all carry our, our computers with us nowadays. So that those will get replaced constantly wherever we put the visitor center alone. So I think the, the key deliverable in the visitor center and in the RFP is people, and so I will let Sue tell us what she proposes to do with the visitor center.
Mayor Urick and council members, before I, I start, I wanted to just tell Councilmember Clark, thank you for informing us about Petty Fow. I've actually been sitting back there trying to not get too emotional, thinking about, I did not know that. She was one of my teachers, love her so much. And I actually had, I feel so blessed, because I had the opportunity a couple years ago to take a few computer classes through Hancock. Every class I walked into, Petty Fow was already sitting in there. So I always tried to sit by her. I couldn't cheat off her, because she always had some crazy art project going instead of what we were working on. But I loved our conversations, and I just want to say that she will be very missed and, and that she was absolutely adored, fabulous, fabulous person. Our family just loved her so much, so I will try to compose myself, but thank you for informing us of that. My name is Susan Lee, I am a clip guard, and I did recently join Scott's marketing team. I'm really excited about it. He's been really great to listen to a local's input, which I've had a lot of things to say about some things that, that they're doing. I wanted to mention really quickly that I had the opportunity to go over and assist a little bit with the filming of the video productions they've been working on. And it was so much fun and so amazing. We came in, brought my dad with the accordion, and Scott comes running over to me. When we got my dad, he's going to be in maybe, unless he ends up on the cutting room floor. But he's playing the accordion, and he gets in, Scott says, come over here, Sue, come over. You've got to see this, this shot, how beautiful your town looks in the, in the monitor. And you know, I come over, and I'm looking at it, like, oh, well, it's my dad sitting there playing the accordion, what's new? And it was nothing to me, but they were so excited about it. And Scott said, look at this view, though, in this shot. He's like, your, your town looks like, Solving looks like a new world. And I sat there looking at the monitor, and I thought, oh my gosh, it's so beautiful, he's so right. So I learned something that day. I came home and had a discussion with my dad about, I think there's something really important, and it was eye-opening to me to have fresh eyes here, too. So I think the combination of the both, having the local voice here and Scott's team, their production, their professionals, it's really a good, it's a perfect mix for a perfect combination of what we need. Like the, we, we see the, the original viewpoints and the new eyes, new fresh eyes, and I, I found that, that to be very eye-opening. The cameraman even, like, said when my dad came on, he was like, oh my gosh. He started playing, and the energy just grew when he came in, and it was just special. So, you know, it was just, it was a really, it was a really interesting, enlightening moment. I also noticed that in the agenda, it did kind of mention that we didn't have maybe as much experience. So I brought in something, it's very small, and you probably can't see from there, but there's these little Abliskiver pans on this that says Danish Days nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four. I have my Abliskiver pan necklace on. And my dad actually gave those out when he was the co-chairman of Danish Days, and then the next year, the chairman. They're a very rare commodity, but we've been doing Danish Days events and worked in the visitor's center. I worked in there for a couple of years, worked in the bureau's office, the SCVB office. My dad ran the visitor's center for, we can't remember, it was twelve or thirteen years, but so I think that sort of covers the experience. My mom wanted me to bring this huge binder full of years of memorability, but I thought I'd just sort of spare you that. She would still like you to all look at it, but you can choose if you want to do that. And also, you might have noticed that our proposal was very streamlined. And Scott and I talked about this, and this was actually done on purpose, because we both agreed that.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. That we have the same vision for the visitor's center, which was not to be a big showy place, it's still the place where people come to make connections. And of course, you know, the digital is really important, modern, moving forward, and using all the technology we can to further Solving's marketing. But the most important thing- But the most important thing I think about the visitor's center itself is making human connections. And so between, like I said, with what Scott's knowledge is and our ability, which is, I believe, to make those connections, I think it's a perfect combination. So we're the old world charm and he brings in all the the modern marketing experience and knowledge. I wanted to share just a really short experience and that I had in the visitor's center one time. And I think this shows how important having that personal connection is. And I'll make it as short as possible. It was a really, a really moving experience. I was working in there and this, it was real busy, but this lady and her looked like her son came in, had a hood put over his head. You couldn't see his face. And um they were just hovering in the back and they wouldn't come up and talk to me. And I had people coming and going, coming and going. And I finally made it a point to really quickly like encourage them to come talk to me. And they didn't, they didn't really want to at first, but as they came in, um, came up to me, I was asking him, what what are you here for? What can I do for you? Have you been? And it was like, I have you been here before? Yeah, we've been here a lot of times. And this son got real emotional and he said, we actually used to come here all the time to solving with with our dad. But he passed away and we haven't been able to be back um for a very long time. And he said, but it's his birthday. So we came and we went to the book loft because that was my dad's favorite spot. And we went and sat on the stairs, actually the wooden stairs were his were his favorite spot in solving. And um they said, we just felt like he was, I know it's going to sound weird, but we felt like his his presence was there with us. And I listened to them and I said, tell me more about your dad. Talk to me more about this. And so they did. I sat there with them. It turned out to be perfect timing. My coworker came in. She started helping other people. I stayed with them and and talked to them for a long time about his dad. And by the time he was done, his hood was down. And he was totally open to the conversation being there. And and they didn't understand why I connected with them so well. But I told them eventually that I was a widow as well. And my son was about um the same age as this young man when his dad died. So I was willing to listen to them and connect with them. And it was this amazing moment that we just felt so connected. And they told me they had never come in the visitor's center before. And they didn't know why they even were there until I started to talk to them and listen to them and made that connection. And and before they left, they were leaning over the the counter and giving me a hug and we were all in tears. But it was this special moment where I knew that I was in the right place and they were in the right place. And it was because I don't see that as a job. It's a, it's not just a job. It's a place, solving is a place that we love, that we have a passion for. I live just down the street. I love sharing it with our locals and our visitors. And I'm really excited at the idea of being able to do that again. Um, I also wanted to share, my dad will Dean Clickguard, he's here. You all probably know him. And he's really excited about the idea of being able to work in the visitor's center again. I even have seen him come into the visitor's center while he's working and seen and seen him talking and speaking in Danish to the visitors. And he's so happy and and these Danes walked out and he looked at me after he finished talking to them, he said, can you believe I actually get paid to do this? So I feel like he's the perfect, the perfect person to be in the visitor's center as well. Um, I've actually also seen him on a regular day in solving. We're driving through town, puts down his window because the trolley's coming up the street. It was, it was the horse-drawn trolley. And he takes off his fisherman's cap, his Danish fisherman caps, starts waving out the window, saying, hi, trolley people, hi, trolley people. And it was the funniest thing I've ever seen, but the trolley people are like, hi, you know? But that was just a regular day. And so we love our town and love to share it all the time. And sometimes in solving, so he has his Danish cap on, we refer to our Danish attire as costumes. Um, but the Danes refer to them as their traditional Danish buff dress. So in either case, we don't need to get new costumes. We don't need to be fitted for them because we have already been wearing them all our lives. And um that's just part of who we are. And uh, thank you very much. I don't know, I was going to introduce my dad, but he can just wave to y'all. But thank you for your time and your consideration. And we really appreciate all the good work that you all are doing too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any um, okay, public comment? Do you want to discuss up here?
That's just, we haven't got a public comment yet. We have three.
Oh, was it?
Yeah. So we have one.
Public comment? Public comment, that's what I was going to do.
Go ahead, Ms. Lee.
I make the motion, we have a public comment.
Thank you very much, Jennifer Sonny. With the seven, that was brief. Okay, with the seventeen years that I've been here, starting in two thousand and four, before I ever moved into my space, I was fortunate enough to work with the visitor's center and the ladies and the gracious staff that represent it solving. What I can say to you of your three candidates emphatically, you have two candidates that I support wholeheartedly. One I do not. The first one I do not support because it's been nothing but negativity since they began in taking away the Solvay Visitor Center and all the direct contact that we had as business was IDK. I cannot support them. Uh, between taste of Solvay and a lot of activities that we had, I've lost significant amount of money. Granted, I realize that COVID-nineteen came along, but along with being able to contact someone that was in San Francisco versus someone down the street that happened to be part of our community, that did not happen. These two ladies, Tracy Beard, has spent nearly twenty-four, seven hours of the day supporting all of our businesses, our needs. That one reason or another that I'm standing here today along with your gracious uh presence is because of that. She knows the community and she has our backs a hundred percent, not for some other reason. The other lady, whether you choose which one, is Brenda Ball. I've worked with her and between what was online of promoting all my activities instead of going and spending X amount of dollars with advertising, she worked with me and made sure all my events were posted. You have a tremendous amount of talent between Tracy Beard, who's sitting over there, and Brenda Ball. And I can't say enough praise for those people other than gentlemen and ladies. I leave it in your hands. As someone that's had direct experience with two of the finest women and her organization, did you have it to fingertips? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, are there any out in Zoom or on the phone? Raise your hand or not?
Seeing none.
All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. Final recommendation.
It seems to me a couple of things. One with the click guards, I think the the local presence is obvious. And it's it's a great local presence, by the way. The IDK proposal is also the lowest cost of the three. I know there's been some issues, but with connections, because they didn't have a local presence. But now with the the click guard in in place, that shouldn't be an issue any longer. And I think they they deserve a strong consideration.
I'll comment. This is one of the things that I absolutely don't like about being a city councilperson is having to make decisions like this because all the, all of these groups could effectively and passionately run the visitor's center and represent solving in a wonderful, wonderful way. Being the way that I am, I look at a lot of things as bottom line and I look at a lot of things with the dollars. And and I I would be leaning towards IDK as well. I, this is kind of, that's not an anecdote, but when Scott first approached the um the the council about running events for Solvay during the previous council, I'm looking at where everybody's from, like San Francisco, okay, cross him off. And I was so floored by his presentation and I'm very pleased with what he's done. The fact that he's paired himself with some wonderful, wonderful people, um, I think is the best of both worlds, but it's just so hard because all three groups could do an outstanding job. And and Brenda has done such an outstanding job getting us through where we've been for the last, you know, eighteen months or yeah, last year. It's just awful. And then I go back to my conservative side. I'm like, I like ninety-nine thousand dollars and a good team to do it. So that would be my my vote.
They're all three good, but I, you know, I carry his or agree with a lot of what he said, but by the same token, spin operated. When I first started getting involved in city issues, Brenda's one of the people I went and talked to and spent time there and have done that for some time. And and I know there's a difference in costs, but when you look at it annually, you know, it's it's not something that's going to break the bank on us, on this particular issue. And I'm not sure at this point that they've done something wrong to take away the job that they've been doing. And that's kind of where I come from.
That's great points.
I I had a question just real quick for Scott, mainly for the hours of operation. And I know that Brenda and the chamber came, you know, had the same hours of operation, ten AM to six. And I'm just kind of curious why you were at nine-thirty to five-thirty as opposed to?
That was, uh,
Up, up here.
So uh, to be honest, my dad and I talked about it. And uh, he he was the manager, like I said, in the visitor's center for twelve or thirteen years and we talked about times and what worked best. And um, we felt like in the evening, after after five, you really just sometimes just sit there with no one. In the morning, people come in, but usually not till about ten because um, you know, that's when the shops open. But you do have some that are coming in. We we used to be open nine to five. So we kind of just broke in the middle. But of course, obviously, we would be willing to do whatever the council's recommendation would be.
Okay, thank you. Claudia, do you have any thoughts?
Um, well, first of all, thank you to um all of the applicants. They have done an outstanding job supporting our city. And uh, yeah, it's very tough to come down here and make a decision. But I will make one point that um, yeah, Brenda stepped up when uh the city asked her once that the the visitor's center uh closed because the visitor bureau was no longer serving solving. But uh, back to that that point, um, prior to that, Mr. Clickguard and everybody else um at the visitor's center, they did an outstanding job staffing it, not only being knowledgeable about the uh businesses that are operating, but also the history of the town. And they were left out of a job from one day to the other through no fault of their own. So I also think that, you know, they deserve a chance to uh serve solving again in a way that they're passionate about. And uh, I would love to, uh, you know, make amends about a horrible situation that um they dealt with, uh, that they had no, no say on. Um, I would love to make that right as well.
All right, thank you. And I guess I haven't made my comments yet, so I'll just write in. I I wanted to thank all three of the proposers for the time and energy that you all have spent in putting this together. And I know the chamber and Brenda have spent countless times because this isn't, as Brenda mentioned, the first time that this has come up. And I know I have been a proponent where I've tried to consolidate costs and some things with having the chamber be be the one, be to, you know, being that right now, solving is the only one that's different. But I also know the history that the click cards had had. And that was uh one of the key elements that I had asked for if there was a way to get them back because I felt that from all of the years that I've been working downtown prior to the dissolution of the SCBB, that they were doing everything that was asked of them. And uh, we come back full circle. And we're we're now having our our quote-unquote SCBB towards being a part of uh, if you can let me make my comments. We've had public comment already, so let me finish. We're kind of coming back full circle again where our marketing team will possibly, at least it appears at this point, that it may be taking over the visitor's center, which I think is what happened with the SCBB, if I'm not mistaken. So I do like the numbers of IDK, uh, just down nuts and bolts. And I think the hours could be worked. I understand that explanation and I understand it's because of the years of experience that you guys had prior working there. I haven't really made a decision yet, but just trying to go around it. Brenda, I saw your hand up first. Now, I'm going to give everyone else an opportunity to speak one last time. Make it fast, I'll give it like one minute.
Yes. Thank you very much, sir. I did fail to mention that I have offered the click guards from the very beginning, the opportunity to work in the visitor's center. And I offered them more money than they made as the SCBB because I do pay my staff more than they made at the SCBB. And uh, Mr. Clickguard actually went with me before I uh accepted the position initially in two thousand and nineteen. He went with me to talk to one of the council members and he chose not to work at the visitor's center. And I've asked Sue and I've asked Kirsten also, and they have not accepted my offers. And there was one more thing. But I'm sorry, it's escaped me. So uh, again, thank you, Charlie, for giving me the opportunity.
You're welcome. Tracy, would you like to follow up with anything or?
I think any one of the three of us would do a great job. I think the chamber brings a little bit more economic development to it on a nighttime basis. And I think our proposal did say till seven PM. But at the same time, I I will support any decision you make and I respect all of you up there. So thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Scott?
Summarize.
Yeah, so I started by saying thank you to Brenda and her family. I agree with Tracy and the chamber would do a great job. At the end of the day, you know, I asked Sue to come to work for us a few months ago. She's been a fabulous account coordinator. We'll have her on our team, you know, long after Solvang. She's been a valuable part of our team on other projects as well. So I'm excited for her to go back and do something that she loves so passionately. And I hope that you give her the opportunity to do so.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead, come on up.
I'll be brief. In situations like this, I once had a professional capability or I was tasked with choosing similar kinds of services from different vendors. And what I came to was unless one vendor is offering something entirely innovative or new or intriguing or qualitatively different in their service package, that we sort of took the position that if the numbers were reasonably aligned, that we could write our spec based on the proposals we received and then go to the people who had been doing a good job and give them the opportunity to respond to that spec. In other words, if it ain't broke, then we weren't trying to fix it necessarily, even though we had input from other vendors. So you might consider that as an approach to this.
Thank you.
Maybe time for a motion.
A move that we accept the IDK proposal.
I'll second that.
Pro call.
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Poteau Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
No.
Mayor Urich?
No.
Process three, two. Moving on to item number eight, receive a marketing update from the city of Solvang marketing consultant, including Yulkes proposed.
Actually, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? We have an item timed certain at eight o'clock.
Number nine.
Item number nine, if we could move that up on the agenda, mayor.
What page is it?
Make a quick motion.
We have a motion to move item nine up to number eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pro call. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Poteau Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Urich?
Yes.
Item number nine, public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the creation of a district-based election system. Hearing will be heard at eight PM. Staff recommends holding the third public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the creation of a district-based election system.
Thank you. We once again have our consultant, Daniel Phillips, with NDC with us. He has a little bit of an updated version of the agenda or the PowerPoint where he's put some additional information on there about different communities. So I'll let him go through that in a second. But just to remind you of why we are here, and that is because on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty, the city council adopted resolution twenty-eleven twelve, declaring its intention to transition from at-large to district-based elections for the city council, commencing with the general municipal election November twenty-twenty-two. The districting process requires four public hearings. Two public hearings must be held prior to release of the draft maps. So you've already had two of those hearings. Today is an extra one, a third one. The city of Solvang held these hearings and we have a dedicated website. So we encourage the public to go to www.districtsolvang.org. A link to this website is also available from our city website and provide their feedback by way of, there's an interactive map that the community can review. We have added some additional information to that map about a week ago or so to where we've populated it with the twenty-twenty census population. So as you use that interactive map, you can look at different populations, such as we have a fairly significant Hispanic population in the downtown area. You can also take a look at the data by the census block. And what we are really looking for from community input and from the city council is just your input on what do you consider to be the neighborhoods and the communities of interest that have common interests that should be collected in one district versus splitting those communities into different districts. With that, I'll have Daniel once again walk us through a brief presentation this time, since it's the third time. And maybe just focus a little bit on that slide where you have created some additional layers of information based on the feedback we've already received. Daniel.
Thank you very much. And good to be with you, council members and mayor again. And let me share my screen with you. So tonight I am coming to you to present a third time. Now, the law only requires two public hearings before draft maps are released, but you can have as many as you like. And so we have the first two on August ninth and twenty-third. And tonight is the third where we are hoping to solicit input on the neighborhoods and communities of interest in the city that we would want to keep united in the district drawing process. And so we will eventually come out with those draft maps in February. Once we have had some time to process the data and get significant public input, then we'll post those on the website and give the public and the council a full month to consider and think over those draft maps. And then we'll have the first of the post-draft map public hearings on March seventh. And that will be the first occasion to discuss and deliberate over the draft maps. And then there will be another one of those on March twenty-eighth. And then there will be an adoption of one of those maps as the final map on April eleventh. The criteria for drawing these maps, I've been through this a couple of times with you already. So I will only be brief here, but the district should have equal population. They should satisfy the Federal Voting Rights Act by not diluting the voting strength of any racial or ethnic minorities. Then on the flip side, not practice racial gerrymandering where you make race ethnicity the only or main consideration. Then you have these state criteria that are in a rank order. So if you can't satisfy them all, then you privilege the higher ones. The highest of those is the districts are contiguous of one piece each, that they not divide neighborhoods and communities of interest, which are socioeconomic geographic areas that should be kept together. Third, that they follow easily identifiable boundaries. And fourth, that they be compact and not bypass linger the people to get to a more distant group. And then there's this prohibition against favoring or discriminating against a political party. Then you may consider these other traditional principles like continuity in office, so avoiding pairing off incumbents. And then if there's any future population growth expected, you can account for that slightly. So here is a demographic summary and just the basics here. The population as reported by the census is six thousand one hundred twenty-six. This number may change slightly once we get the official prisoner adjusted data. We expect that on September twentieth, so a week from tonight. And then, but I would be shocked if they were very, very different from that number. And so that is the total population. And then you can see the citizen voting age population. So just looking at those who are eligible to vote, the total on that is four thousand four hundred eighty-seven. And the racial ethnic breakdown is seventy-three percent non-Hispanic white, twenty-three percent Hispanic, and smaller percentages of other groups. So if we go by the twenty-twenty census numbers, each of the four districts must contain about fifteen hundred people. And here I provide some population council sections of the city, just for reference and for you to get a sense of what these districts might look like. And so if you were to break the city into four quadrants roughly, you have Mission Drive or Two Forty-Six as one line through the city and Alasol Road as the other. You can think of the Northwest quadrant as having two thousand two hundred twenty-six, the Northeast as having one thousand one hundred fifty-eight, the Southwest, one thousand nine hundred fifty-nine, and the Southeast, four hundred eleven. And then you have the Far North, three hundred seventy-two. So I just provide these numbers to give you a sense of what we're looking at here and to illustrate how you can't really divide the city into four quadrants. The numbers don't work out well enough to do that. So we're going to have to be a little more creative in how we think about splitting up the city in order to adhere to the equal population guidelines or rules, I should say. So as a reminder, we have this interactive review map that Ms. Baffert already mentioned and it can be found at the link on the website. And you can see examples of data layers that you can find there. I will briefly show a more recent addition to the interactive review map. So if you go there, you'll see that you have the same data layers as before, but you'll see there's a couple of new ones. If you click here for census blocks, you will be able to see the census blocks for the whole city. And you can see how many people live in each census block. So you have thirty-six people who live here. And you see that this one is quite a large census block, the way they, the census tends to use streets as their boundaries. And so because of that, you can get some very large census blocks when you have a lot of cul-de-sacs. So this one has three hundred nine people and this one has three hundred forty-six. But others have much smaller populations, like in the commercial area where there aren't as many people living there. Now, if you want to take a more broader look at things, you can look at census block groups. These are entities that the census comes up with. They group all the blocks into these larger block groups. And so all of them have their own color and you can see how many people live in each of these census block groups. So you have the red one down here has a hundred ninety-one and the north one has six hundred twenty. And you can see that there's a lot more people who live in this section of the city. More than would be enough for a city council district, which as you recall is about fifteen hundred people. So, but all the other layers are still there that I've already shown before, like percent Cevapletino. So the public hearing and discussion tonight, we're hoping to get input on what are the neighborhoods of the city and what are their boundaries? What are the communities of interest in the city and what are their boundaries? And the interactive review map showcases potential neighborhoods and communities of interest. And so we're hoping that tonight the council could discuss and take action on recognizing a list of areas that meet each definition according to state law. You have neighborhoods, which actually aren't defined by state law, but whatever the council decides are worthy of being considered neighborhoods, then you will want to make note of that. And then these are defined, communities of interest, areas that should be included within a single district for purposes of its effective and fair representation. So here I list off some neighborhoods that have been mentioned at recent public hearings. And what I'm going to do is as I list them off, their rough spatial location will be shown on the map to the right. And so these are just neighborhoods that have been mentioned. This is certainly not an exhaustive list, but it's a starting point and we can hear from the council and the public whether, what you think of these. But we have Alamo Pantado Village Townhomes in the northeast over here. We have Alasol Glen to the south. Alasol Ranch, which kind of extends off-screen, it's that whole lawn tail that goes way down to the south. Adida Village, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing a lot of these Danish names, but you have Adida Village, Creekside, Mission Oaks, Niborg Estates. You have Rancho Santa Inez Estates, which is a mobile home park to the southwest. A Skip Mesa, Viking Hills, Village Collection. And there may be others that you may not be aware of. So feel free to let us know if there's any we missed. Then when it comes to communities of interest that have been mentioned at recent public hearings, we've heard about multifamily housing in certain areas. We've heard about senior living facilities, mobile home parks are at least one of those. Areas with traffic problems potentially, homeowners associations, which may be several of the neighborhoods I mentioned. And if there are any others you might want to add, please let us know. You might get ideas from the interactive review map. So that is all I have. And so again, I just go back to this slide where we ask if you could give us some guidance as far as approving this list that we came up with or adding to it so that we have a sense of how we should be drawing the district lines and best satisfying and following the state criteria number two, which says we should not divide neighborhoods and communities of interest. So thank you for your attention and happy to take any questions or input.
Are there any questions? I have one. Do you have or can you provide an interactive map for the computer where you can define an area and it would automatically give you the population within the area that you just defined?
We have not made that tool available for the city of Solvang. But that is, that is, we do have tools that we like that, that we've made available for other cities who requested it.
It'd be a lot easier for us, I think, if we could get on our computers and then play with those areas so that we're keeping the neighborhoods together, but still know what the, you know, population is within those areas that we define. I'd appreciate that. I don't know.
No? I have a comment. From, coming from, we didn't know we had, we didn't know we were broke, but we've got to fix something. So the state makes mandates that a city of five thousand nine hundred or six thousand residents has to adhere to. And I'm looking at the screen and I'm seeing so many different criteria that I don't know whether you throw a dart or how you do this. Do you separate the town into renters versus homeowners? Do you send it along like as they point out up here? Do you send it along racial lines? Do you send it along, there's just too many variables. I mean, I honestly think you could just throw a dart at this map and fine, there's your districts. And the state makes rules, so we have as a city have to go out and hire consultants and spend them thousands of dollars to show us this stuff. And I was one of the first people to call for this, for district elections. I didn't want the city to get litigated against and lose money. But there's just so many, how do you pick a criteria? And that's a question. How do we pick the criteria? How do we pick the criteria? Because they throw fifty-four different items at you that you've gotta you've gotta separate your town this way, which I think separating a town this small is is awful. Because I we're all solving residents. And I I know that I know the how the the thinking in Sacramento and how that works. And you look at, you know, the haves and the have-nots in certain areas and there's underrepresentations and and that's very, very true and especially in LA County. But I think this is such a can of worms. Where do we start? And I know that's what you're doing right now, but how do we? With all the different criteria, which what's the first one to pick? Geographic is not gonna work because we've got our our residents are too concentrated in certain areas. So do you draw the map like it's a San Francisco district with fifty-four different neighborhoods in one person's district that have nothing in common other than maybe one or two things? Um, how are we gonna do this?
Well, first you make sure you're following the federal laws. So have districts that have equal populations and are not diluting the voting strength of racial or ethnic groups, but not in a way that is considered racial gerrymandering, which is a fine balance, but it can be done. And then once you make sure you're doing that, then you turn to the state criteria and they have a rank order. So you first you make sure you're following one, then two, then three. And so number one is that the districts have are contiguous, so they're just one piece, which is pretty easy. And just make sure they're they're not disconnected pieces. And number two, not divide neighborhoods and communities of interest. And that's one of the main purposes of tonight is to figure out what those neighborhoods and communities of interest are so that we make sure we're not dividing them.
I thought we were all one community of interest here. I thought we were all solving residents.
Oh, silly you.
That's not I know that's not popular to say these days and it probably gets me into more trouble than it than it does, but this is just so nutty.
Can have you received any input from the public to date about solving?
Good question.
Daniel?
I uh I believe that the the contact email goes to you, Ms. Brappert.
It it is, yes. I was wondering if we have any activity on the website, but no, we have not.
Okay, so here here's the next silly question. What if nobody comes up with any districts in time? Does your, what'd you call him, a demographer, just decide on what that would be and present it to us?
Yeah, so what what's gonna happen is we are going to hope to receive public input and the and we have received a lot of public input already through these public hearings.
Here in solving?
What's that?
Here in solving?
Yes, yeah.
Thought I just heard we didn't get any input.
We did that.
We receive we received it verbally by people who spoke up during public comment during the the last two public hearings. And so we have that and we've uh we've made a record of that and and a lot of the input made it into the presentation tonight. And so hopefully we'll get some more input through the through the contact email on the website. And then we'll take all the input and and draw maybe three, maybe four maps and present it to you. And then you, the council, and members of the public will have a chance to weigh in on those maps. You'll see it a month in advance, so you'll have plenty of time to consider it in advance. And then we'll we'll all come together for that post-draft map hearing and discuss it together. And you can you can figure out amongst yourselves which of those you think is the best or maybe proposal revisions. And then we'll come back again for the second hearing and then eventually adopt one of those maps.
I think he's referring to when Aaron Peterson talked about how you could divide the city up, if you remember that.
Yeah, and that was a good.
It was a great point.
Great point.
But I didn't think that was official. That was he said that was what I'm going to do it.
I liked it. But then again, does that step on some of their demanded criteria if we do it that way? To me, you could say, do you pick do you pick three out of the ten?
Well, I think if we just divided it up by equal population.
And what else are you gonna do?
There's nothing else you can do. It's still good. Did we?
Daniel, would you be able to put up the screen with the neighborhoods that were listed?
Yes.
Of populations.
Well, those are just individual little neighborhoods. That's not four.
Is this one? Is this two? Is this three? And is this four? You can run it that way.
That's what that Councilman Thomas was saying. How do we know what the population is? Can we draw circles around that and say, what's the population now?
That to me is is actually kind of cohesive. So, okay, do we have the right numbers there? Fine, let's go with that. Save some money.
If I can chime in a little bit on this. I think the procedures that we have been going through with the public hearings is information gathering. We're not asking you to make final decisions on this. It just goes into the hopper to come up with ideas. So if there are readily identified communities of interest that the council wishes to preserve or comment on, that's part of the public hearing process. If there are just simple population numbers, if you notice that all the population was north of Mission Drive, that would give you some additional information. There are some inequalities in the numbers there. So all that goes into the hopper to provide the demographer some background on things that are important to the community, but also keeping in mind the the impact of making sure that the city is not unduly using district elections to suppress a particular voter group from electing a candidate of its choice. So with the information that's been provided, you may not think that there has been, but there has been some information provided that informs the discussion about how those draft maps will be. Then you'll have draft maps that will have numbers attached to them, the the population, that will take all that into account, and then you can make some decisions. Does that make sense? Is that something that fits right for solving? And is that fundamentally something that would allow an identified group to elect a candidate of its choice? So those will be coming back, but all this information is the information gathering stage. It's not to come up with a final decision tonight.
Can Mr. Mayor, may I ask? Can we go back to the previous map? Oh, it's there, but not here. I can't see it.
Yeah.
Okay. With your circles. The one we were just discussing.
There we go.
Okay. So if I may stand up, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
Okay, so you were saying that the majority of your population is right here, right? So you've got one district, one district, one, two, three, and four. This is where the majority of your population is. So then you find out, okay, we gotta do two hundred over this one, two hundred out of here, two hundred out of there. Bingo.
And we're back to what Jim was saying. That's what he's asking for.
But then does that fit conform to all the other criteria that we need?
If you put up one of the layers, which is the percent CBIP Latino, and you see where the concentration is, that's gonna inform where the concentration is perhaps of a group that would be identified as wanting to have a candidate of its own choosing. And if you click on each one of those to determine where your population centers are to allow those groups to identify a candidate of their choosing, it may coincide with the diagram that you just drew with your hands up there. Again, additional information that allows Daniel and his company to figure out, okay, does this make sense? Maybe the downtown itself is a separate district. Maybe you combine the southern part Alasol up with Skid Mesa. Maybe that makes sense as an identifiable group. Maybe it doesn't. But these are options that you'll have. And once you see the maps with the number of people in them and you understand that there's roughly proportional numbers in each one of them, then you can move those boundaries slightly.
Yeah, and downtown has thirteen residents, so all you need to do is get your family to vote for you and you're in.
So I I think what I heard is we should just give up on this for now and wait until the maps come back and we'll take a look at it.
I I think if you have additional inputs, Daniel and his company would like to hear them. If you have no further inputs at this point, then Daniel and his company have the information that they will be able to draft maps for you.
So take that the ones that we would you guys be okay with those four sections and then drawing from that center section? Cause it's.
Could could I ask, how expensive is it to get the map that I'm talking about where you can draw draw an area and see what the population is within that area? I mean, how much money are we talking about? He said they could do it.
Yeah, the first map that he showed, I keep stepping on the guys, I apologize, had numbers, had that that first map had numbers.
It's already it's already here. And that's the census blocks.
Those are the blocks, but they don't necessarily tell you the population aggregate.
Oh, I thought it did. I thought it had numbers of residents in that particular area.
Daniel, you want to pull up that interactive map just one more time with the numbers on it?
Yes.
I I think what Councilmember Thomas was interested in is, is there a tool that you can aggregate each of those census blocks to determine how much the total population is in there? They do have the individual populations, but unless you go and take a piece of paper and add them all up, I don't think there's a layer on there that I was able to find that showed the total population in a given drawn district.
I have a tin key in my office. I could do it for you.
Daniel?
We have population by census block group, which you see the colored areas. But if if those are, I mean, this one is already too big for a district. So really, your only, your best recourse using this tool is to use the numbers that you see here and and take a calculator and manually add them up. And then you can get a sense of, like, if you wanna start in one section of the city and go inward, you can keep adding up until you get to fifteen hundred and then and then start again. But there are there are mapping tools that we've made available to other cities where it does add up the numbers for you as you you actually use like a paintbrush tool and fill in the blocks. And there will be a screen at the right that shows you how many people are in each district that you make. So that that is an option, but I don't think we have a a price on that at this time. But I can I can give that to you if you're interested.
Council, I can work with the consultant to end the existing contract to see what we can do and provide that to to you and the public.
Thank you. I was wondering if there's anybody out in the audience that when they took note of the neighborhoods, does that seem like it encompasses all of the neighborhoods in solving?
Mr. Bebe?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I agree with Councilman Clark. The biggest population wasn't even identified as a neighborhood. I used to live up looking down on the flat. For me, the flat was a neighborhood. It was the original structures that created the tourist town of solving in the forties and fifties. And that's just that great big blank on on the neighborhoods as identified. So, you know, if I can observe, you're in a position of exercising management by by objection. You get you get an offering by the experts equally divided by population and you decide whether you like it or not. And you may be able to tweak it yourself. We'll find out how much that'll cost. But otherwise, you say, well, I don't know how many maps a consultant, you know, is gonna present to you, but you look at it. It's I'm sorry, it's management by exception, not by objection. And you and you decide. And each of those maps will have evaluation presumably based upon these these priorities that you must meet in some kind of prioritization. So they'll be evaluated and that evaluation will be presented to you as well. Good luck.
Can we ask the consultants to come up with four maps? We're not experts at this. They are. Come up with four maps at the next meeting and we'll pick one.
Councilmember Clark, yes, the the next step would be for the consultant to draft the maps based on the input they have received to date. Those draft maps will be posted on the website for everybody's review on February seventh so that there is a month of additional input from the public and the council before it comes to you in public meeting.
Do we have one more public hearing?
We have two more after the maps are posted, I guess.
Okay, yeah. No, maps won't come out until February.
February seventh is when the maps will be posted.
We're gonna have two more meetings before February?
No, after, after February.
Yeah, because it isn't coming at all.
So in February, you will have the maps available by the consultants. They will be posted publicly. I will continue to receive input before we get back to you for your first official public hearing and then you will have one more.
The only good thing about it is if you ever run through election, you'll have a yard sign for every single person in your district.
That was basically a public hearing and we've had. Do we have any other public comment at all? Either in the audience or out in Zoom? I don't see any. Just close the public hearing.
Thank you.
We could take a short five-minute break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And.
What time is it now?
You would need to take. You would need to take.
We'll be back in five.
Of recreation, which is doing phenomenal work for the locals. Working with the DMO that is responsible for marketing the overall valley, which is the city and its valley. And then, of course, working with the business entity, the Chamber of Commerce, in order to amplify the businesses. And then, of course, our responsibility is to, as it says here, harmonize those efforts and deliver sort of a cohesive front. So on the Brand Foundation, we basically used your brand guidelines from the meeting that you just had, the State of City. And what we've done, and we mentioned this earlier on, we've really identified these, like, seven key areas, these seven key audiences. And they break down kind of three areas. So there are travelers with unique needs, travelers with specific tastes, and then seasonal travelers. And then we break that down further with families, pet lovers, which has exploded in COVID. Everybody and their uncle has gone and gotten a dog. Budget travelers that, you know, obviously their pocketbooks have been affected by COVID, so they're looking to travel on budget. We have the opposite end of the spectrum, what we call colloquially the bougie explorer, which they've got money to burn. The art and architecture, so these folks are really interested in art and architecture. The folks that are interested in food are up curian traveler. And then, of course, our seasonal traveler in Christmas. So everything that we're doing on the Brand Foundation side is really trying to speak to one of these seven very distinct groups. So again, here for families, pet lovers, budget travelers, and Christmas audiences, we're leaning into our heritage, we're leaning into architecture and location, and we're promoting key season moments and visuals. And then, of course, for bougie, art and architecture, and up curian, we're showing more sophisticated view of solving. And again, this goes back to what I said over a year ago now, that we see our responsibility not to come in and change anything, but to take the foundation that already exists, pull a couple of levers to make sure that we bring a more robust audience. So obviously, one of the key Brand Foundations currently is that solving is a day trip location. And obviously, like the regional DMO, we have a strong goal of growing overnight stays and encouraging longer-term visits, and obviously encouraging day trippers to turn into overnight stays. Obviously, the website's a big part of that. We'll talk about that later in the six-month cycle. We're obviously shifting from a quick place to take a picture into more of a lifestyle so that we can encourage folks to stay longer. We'll talk about voice and tone again later in what we're working on, but again, I'll come back to these key points and we'll expand on them as we get to the points in our contract where we're working on these specific things. Obviously, exploration content and guide are the tactics that we're using to reinforce the Brand Foundation. They're in the packet. I'll let you guys read those, and we'll come back to that Brand Foundation as we present the new website here in a couple of weeks. Audience storytelling, this is where we're at right now. We're spending a lot of time on this. And so this is the videos that you approved, and we moved this ahead of brand just because in terms of time, we felt that it was really important to get these videos into the bloodstream. For the last 18 months, across all of our marketing channels, we're using what's called user-generated content. And while it's amazing, and, you know, it's truly what people are looking for because it's generated by the people who are coming, it doesn't necessarily speak the language that we want to speak. So we need these videos, which you approved back in July, in order to kind of reinvigorate that overall marketing mix. So we started shooting those about a month ago. They're currently being edited. You'll get to see one of the first edits, which, thank God, my global head of creative is on vacation for her 50th birthday, or she would murder me for showing you something that's not done yet, but I'm going to give you a sneak peek anyway. So again, we really are focused on honoring the architecture, culture, location, and sites that already exist, but then modernizing them through look, styling, stories, and setting. What does that mean? We take a building that looks like a building, show it in a completely different way, and now it's something magical, new, and exciting. So really, with, you know, with the way that we're telling the story, we can tell a new story without having to actually change anything, which is really magical because we can reach new audiences. We love talking about solving storybook charm. You'll start to see that phrase, storybook charm, more and more and more, in addition to the Danish capital of America. But storybook charm sort of talks to those last two aspirational targets that we have. So obviously, the tactic that we're in right now are these shorts in the fall video, which we'll show you in a minute. So the seven video shorts are showcasing stories that appeal to each target audience group. The group that, the story I'll show you today is the Christmas short. And then we'll also get a dedicated video to promote solving throughout the fall, which that's currently an edit and should be ready by the end of September. And then, of course, within harmonizing our efforts, you know, we need to make sure that we're working in concert to drive the same outcomes. So whether that visitor comes to us through the visitor center, comes to us through Instagram, Facebook, comes to us through one of the many businesses, or comes to us through one of the hotels or wine tasting rooms, they all need to be receiving the same message so that we can start targeting them at different things, which is our roadmap. This is probably the most important slide in the whole thing that I've been sort of skipping towards. So everything that we're doing comes back to one of these four funnels: awareness, consideration, conversion, advocacy. So right now, these videos are really focused on awareness and consideration. So basically, awareness is, you know, who knows about solving? And then consideration is, those people who know about solving, who's considering coming? Then, of course, once they're here, or once they have considered solving, we have to convert them to an actual stay. And then, once they're here, we need them to be so excited that they go home and tell people. So just keep this one in mind. If there's any of these that you keep in front of you, this is an important one because everything we do, including this Yule Fest presentation, you'll see in a minute, I'll show you how each element of Yule Fest is targeting either awareness, consideration, conversion, or advocacy. Because each thing we're doing within Yule Fest is targeting a different funnel, and then within that funnel, a different key segment. These are the KPIs, so these are the stick by which Madame City Manager will keep prodding us. So obviously, through awareness, we're judging total impressions and audience reach for consideration. We're judging website visits, click-to-call buttons, registrations, successful registrations, and then, of course, follower count. Conversion, we're measuring the total bookings that are being converted through any one of the avenues that we're sending to, you know, so everything comes into a landing page, and then those get converted. That's our conversion funnel. And then our KPI against advocacy is word of mouth and positive social mentions. So this is sort of what I just said, but in a more intelligent paper that our strategist wrote. Then this is some of the PR. I won't go through this, you've seen it in a million other meetings. And then recap Brand Foundation's audience storytelling, harmonizing efforts, that's what we're doing. So with that, I will show you, you can take this off Madame City Manager. With that, I will show you the video. This is not done at all, so please don't judge it as a complete video, but I did think that it was important to show you sort of 97% of the first Yule Fest commercial that is almost done.
Where did these go, Scott?
So these go all over the place. So again, depending on the funnel that we're targeting, you'll start to see these in social, you'll start to see them in key places. So Red Try is a sort of a mommy blog that we had great success with in Yule Fest 2019. So you'll see them placed on Red Try, you'll see local placements with the local newspapers, you'll see some television, though it's not a priority for us because it's expensive and it doesn't really do what we want it to do. But you'll see different cuts of this. So this is a 60-second cut, but you'll see like 10, 15-second cuts of this that get spread everywhere, and then we do what's called A/B testing. So we see which cut gets the most conversion, and then that's the cut that people start to see more, and then we associate copy with that, too. So then we start to narrow down that conversion funnel. But ultimately, the purpose of this video is awareness, consideration, and conversion, those very first three things. So it gets placed sort of all over the place. And then, incidentally, we went and took a little bit of risk with the way that we filmed this. We filmed this in a very specific style. This is very different than what you would expect for a normal tourism marketing video. And that was a calculated risk, both because we need to cut through the noise of tourism marketing. Everybody and their uncle is talking to tourists right now because, you know, everybody's panicking about what to do. So we were really, really intentional about shooting this in a way that would cut through that noise, but also something that we can submit to all of the film blogs, the film nerds. Because the film buffs will instantly see the type of lens we use and the type of composition. It's a very Wes Anderson-style composition. And we're confident that, once these start going out into the bloodstream, we've got a whole list through our PR team run by Anna. We've got a whole list of film blogs that we're submitting these to so that they can get a little additional legs that way. So anyway, this one's a terrible, it's not terrible, I think it's okay, but it's not done. So anyway, go ahead.
A kid with a report. Well, I might not be prepared for this, but here you go.
Anyway, don't judge me too harshly. So yeah, so that's the first of the seven, six long-form videos. And then there's different cuts of that that focus more on different things. So you'll notice a special appearance by Uluhus and a few of its employees, as well as some of our Danish mates. So I'm very excited to start putting that out into the bloodstream. All right, so with that, let's talk about Yule Fest. And then if it's okay with everybody, I'll take all of the questions together rather than break them up, unless you want to do them now so that none of us forget. I'm getting old.
What does that make us?
Younger than me in some ways.
We'll take them at the end.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right, so Yule Fest. So, you know, in 2019, we did some over-the-top stuff to sort of shake the foundation of what Yule Fest was and had become. We learned an awful lot. We spoke to many, many, many merchants and learned what they absolutely did not like and what we absolutely will be run out of town if we ever try and do again. And then we also learned some of the things that they really did like. And we talked to tons of visitors and got similar feedback. So with that, what we've done is sort of refocused on the things that make Yule Fest and solving in particular like an amazing Christmas destination. And that's that charm, character, storybook charm, told you, you'd hear it, that storybook charm that you can only get in solving. So with that, I'll take you through the first of the mini activations. So, and this one is, I can already tell, going to be the one that gets the most questions. So don't judge the picture, it's a terrible picture, and I will have that conversation with my graphics department when I get home. But the first is a version of the Solving Christmas Light Show that we did, not the over-the-top Sol Vegas as it was, as it became known last year, and I'm lasers over there chuckling because he ran that show. The, this is a much more slimmed-down and solving-appropriate version of a light show. And essentially, what we'll do is we'll tell this story through motion graphics, using our in-house motion graphics team, and we'll tell a story of solving TBD, what that story is, but it'll be amazing because our social, I mean, our motion graphics team is awesome. But we will put together a motion graphics story that will bring to life the side of a building somewhere in solving. We are currently looking at something adjacent to the park so that folks can mill about in the park, being ready for it. It'll happen one time per night on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. I agree wholeheartedly with what the Chamber is saying, that the businesses, especially during Christmas, need to stay open a little bit later. And I think that this can be the stick, much like the over-the-top light show was, that got people here. This can be the stick that gets them here, and then the businesses can stay open and earn their business. So essentially, what we want to do is using a technology called 3D projection mapping, we want to be able to tell approximately five-to-seven-minute cute sort of story on the side of one of the buildings of solving. And this hits all of the funnels, because when we put it out on the internet and start showing these, these things tend to get legs and run. So it's the awareness and consideration funnel when people start to share this on social media, but all the way down to the advocacy funnel, because people are going to be like, oh my gosh, you're never going to believe this thing I saw on solving, we have to go back, you know, when are you available? Let's go the day after Christmas, you've got to see this amazing thing. So this literally goes back to every single funnel. So this is the first element, the Solving Christmas Light Show. This is sort of a mood board about that light show. And if you'll notice in the top left, and this is something I didn't create a slide for on its own, because I needed, I wanted to talk this concept through with the TAC. If I haven't said it yet, I love the TAC, thank you for that, because it gives us a chance to sort of chat these things through with folks that are interested. So the thing you see in the top left, this is Aurora Borealis, so there's a little bit of stage magic there. It's a 3D projection map technology, but it's on a very thin mesh. So we would need permission from one of the local business owners to stretch this behind their business. But it's something much like what we just went out and saw with the, with the Air Force, or with the Delta launch. It's something that you could see kind of throughout town, and something that was completely unexpected, and something that would drive people to go, how in the heck did they do that? So this is something that we're proposing Thursday through Sunday, again, as a way to encourage people to come to town in conjunction with the Chamber, to get people to come to town at night and give them something kind of neat to do that's less obtrusive than the over-the-top light and music show that we did last year. Getting a little bit more traditional, so Solving Park was where we'll do the Santa meet and greet. We're going to call it the Northern Pole, not the lodge like we did last time, no red barn, no cut-down trees, no, you know, none of that craziness. So instead of setting the stage that Santa's barn is where he lives, we're setting the stage that Solving Park is the Danish North Pole. Every Saturday of Yule Fest, from 12 to 4, Santa will be available for pictures, and we'll transform the Solving Park gazebo into Santa's workshop, which is there in the middle. Again, much more traditional than what we've done in the past, but kind of exciting and fun. And again, back to the first two funnels, this is one of those things that people will take photos of and will get us legs on the awareness and consideration funnels. Candlelight Tours, we're really excited to bring these back. Sue and her family can't wait to do these. They were a wild success in 2019 until people met the tour guide that we hired. Turns out that was some bad advice, and I'm happy to say that the tour guide that's been doing it for a number of years is on payroll and is very happy to do these tours. So the Click Guards will be back doing their wildly popular candlelight tours, which is, again, another thing to get folks here after hours, and then it's up to the businesses to make sure that they're open and taking their money, which we'll work closely with the Chamber to make sure that happens. Christmas Market. So again, this is not, this is something that we've talked about a lot in solving, and I want to be crystal clear, we are not in any way advocating that we bring anything in from outside solving, nor are we even advocating that we bring things from other parts of solving into one area. What we are advocating for is, through a bit of advertising magic, we transform the entire town into a traditional Christmas market. So we market the town in its, in its storybook charm as a place that you'd want to come for Christmas. So if any of you have been to London, Paris, Denmark, or anything else at Christmas, if you close your eyes, you remember the smell of the roasted chestnuts, you remember the mulled wine, you remember the sounds, you remember like how cozy. Renee would say it's Huga, of course, everybody knows, but it's a cozy feeling, and we can recreate that by marketing that if you want to come and shop local in Southern California in 2021, you need to be in solving. And we market that to the folks who are already planning on coming to the Christmas Experience in Cambria, or the amazing Field of Lights in Paso, and we convince them to come just a little bit further south, stay for a night, and experience our only-found-in-solving Christmas market. And we don't do that by bringing in outside vendors, we do that by creating a very intentional guide of where you can go find gifts for him, gifts for kids, gifts for dad, that you can only find in solving. The other concept that we're still working on is here on the right. As part of that Christmas market, we're considering creating Huguhus, which would be like a cozy hut or cozy house, that we would work with a local merchant to sell chocolate, or hot chocolate, or mulled wine, and we could play a little bit with that sense of smell, because we think that's the one piece that was missing. And we would do that there on Copenhagen. Of course, we'll bring back the tree lighting ceremony, which is a huge local favorite. We're working with a potential vendor to produce that on our behalf, TBD, but Sue is negotiating the contract now. But we anticipate bringing all of the fan favorites back. Mr. Martino was very keen to provide his support, once again, for the tree lighting ceremony. So we'll bring back a lot of the elements that the locals are used to, the dancing around the tree, the bands, the various bands, and it'll be a really, really lovely night for locals. Again, mood board. Nisei Venture, this has been great for a number of years. We improved it a little bit by doing QR codes, so we got more data, we'll bring that back. We're working with our motion team to create a little bit more of an augmented reality piece to this, but this becomes a very, very, very key place that we gather data. We learn what time people are doing this. We learn how many people are doing it as a couple, as a family, as a single person. We learn where they live, because we ship them a prize at the end, so we get their physical address. So the dollar value of the data for this free, you know, everybody says if something costs nothing, then you are the product. This is one of those things. You get to do the free Nisei Venture, but you become our product, and our product is all of this data that goes back to the businesses that participate in the Nisei Venture. So we'll do that again. And there will be a little bit more of a story element, now that we've had a little bit more time and have our creative team on it, so each spot will be part of a broader story. COVID Dependent, we're talking about doing the Skoll Wine and Stein Stroll, that the Tourism Committee was very adamant that this be rethought, so we're working to rethink it. We want to potentially raise the price to discourage those who just want to come and get completely wasted and stumble around solving. So COVID Dependent, we are looking at doing the Wine and Stein Stroll again. These are the wines and steins that we brought in in 2019, fresh update for 2021. And again, COVID Dependent will likely do a version of this that works, again, with the Chamber, to work with all the different tasting rooms to make sure that it's not something that turns into a drug fest. This is the team that's working on this, obviously, Adamar and Jamie. Jamie's the one who's celebrating her 50th birthday and would murder me for showing that unfinished commercial. Obviously, myself, Jacob, Sheila, Brett are motion graphics guy, and Nick are studio designer, just so you can see all the folks who are working on it. And Jacob says thank you, even though he wasn't here to show you this. All right, I talked way too long, and I managed to get through that in 15 minutes.
Thank you so much for that, Scott, we appreciate that. Is there any questions? Looking forward to it.
Great, thank you.
A lot of great ideas.
We're starting the first, the Friday after?
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm actually getting calls from Riverside County, people are actually emailing us from last year.
Yeah.
That's December 3rd, right?
Yep, absolutely. So out of respect for, obviously, the process and working with the new TAC, we wanted, and the city manager, you know, we wanted to present it to the TAC, which we've done. We've incorporated a lot of their feedback. We wanted to introduce it to you before we ever put it out to the public. But Councilmember Clark is correct, the public is a chomping. So with your approval, we'd like to start slowly slipping it into the bloodstream, that not only is it going to happen, but here are some of the elements. And one thing I forgot to mention, because it's not in there, I've been in talks with Jeanette. They are going to bring back the nativity, even with the closure of the Theater Fest. So we're really excited to work with her to produce the nativity in the park the weekend after the tree lighting sermon.
Scott, thanks so much for what you do, by the way. When people call us from out of town, when can they go on what website to see what you just showed us?
Yep, solvingusa.com is the first stop, and then solving...
Is it up and loaded now?
It won't be, because again, we wanted permission from this body before we did that, but it can be live on Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay, thank you.
And then we have our team kind of power out Tuesdays at 3, so it'll be done after that. And then solvingyules.org is where we put things in 2019, because we didn't have access to the solvingusa.com. So we'll update both in tandem, but all of our landing pages will now direct people to solvingusa.com, because that's an asset the city owns that we want. You know, that's where the meat of 20 years of investment have gone, and we want to continue to cultivate that asset rather than try and create a new one.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. I did want to ask, real quick, parade?
Oh, yes. Sorry, excuse me, sorry. Yes, the parade will happen the night before the tree lighting ceremony, and the TAC mentioned that, too, that I forgot to put in the presentation, and the version I emailed, I left the parade out. I am so sorry.
So the parade's going to happen at night?
No.
No, the Saturday after the tree lighting?
Correct, did I say that before? It'll happen the Saturday after the tree lighting.
It was dated as tree lighting?
The 3rd, December 3rd, which is the Friday night, and then Saturday is typically that parade.
Yes, and we are working with Caltrans to secure that permit, obviously, because with COVID, we didn't get the annual renewal of those permits. But hopefully, we went ahead and submitted all four, so for Danish Days, for ours, four, there were two others that were routine events, we went ahead and submitted for all of those. And then, this is on the agenda, so I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about it. Am I allowed to mention the two things that will be coming up in terms of permitting? Even though it's not on the agenda?
It's a marketing update, so yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So you guys will see on the next meeting, two items. One is the Wheels and Windmills Car Show, which is October the 9th, super excited for that one. And you'll also see the Solving Half Marathon. Those guys have a conditional permit pending public health that was issued like a year ago, that we told them that if public health allowed their event to happen in what felt like a faraway time of November of 2021, then we could do a permit at that time. But the time is now upon us. So we're working on getting the final paperwork together for all of that, and that will be presented to you at the next council meeting.
And what day was that?
That is, I don't have that in front of me, I'm sorry. It's, I can send it to the city manager after this meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great job, Scott, as always, thank you. Right. Moving on to item number 10.
Traffic calming Laurel Avenue speed humps near Solvang School. Direct staff to proceed with two additional speed humps on Laurel Avenue between Fourth Place and Attardag Road and fund the improvements with the cost savings from the South Elsal Road pavement reconstruction project.
Great, thank you very much, Henry. So I'd like to start by just giving a little background on what led up to this request. So you may remember about nine months ago, we were finishing up the Solvang School sidewalk project, and one of the locations on that project was Laurel Avenue between Fourth Place and Attardag Road, more specifically, the north side of Laurel Avenue there. And while construction was ongoing on Laurel Avenue, several of the residents asked me, you know, how come there are speed humps on the block of Laurel West and around down to Mission Drive, but no speed humps there right next to the Solvang School? And I said, I didn't know why that was like that, that all happened, you know, before I started working here, so. And they started inquiring, well, how can we get speed humps on this block of Laurel? And I explained to them the city's speed hump request policy and procedures, and so they obtained the documents with the procedures and the petition and the forms and everything, and then subsequently submitted all that to us. But if you could, okay. So to begin, as I mentioned, the request of the location is Laurel Avenue between Fourth Place and Attardag. And with the petition, 75% of residents on this block have requested the speed humps, so that's really a pretty high percentage. And then, as mentioned, the other blocks of Laurel Avenue between Mission Drive and Fourth Place have eight existing speed humps. So this map shows four of the speed humps. The fifth speed hump on Laurel is down closer to Mission Drive, off the bottom left of the... The fifth speed hump on Laurel is down closer to Mission Drive off the bottom left of the of the exhibit there. But you can see Solvang School there kind of in the middle and where a lot of the existing speed humps are located. So one of the things we do in in reviewing our request is contact the sheriff's department and the fire department. And in this case, since Solvang School is right there, we contacted Solvang School previously and they basically have expressed a neutral position regarding speed humps. So they don't really have an opinion one way or the other. Although they are definitely interested in safety features and anything that's traffic calming. So we also contacted the sheriff's department and they provided their approval of the two proposed speed humps. And then in the staff report, at the time the staff report was submitted and published, we hadn't got a response back from the fire department. But just a couple of days ago, they did respond and they also approved the two proposed speed humps. So this map shows the approximate location of the two proposed speed humps. And what we'll do is if if the city council ends up approving this this evening, we'll go out and more precisely locate the speed humps because we don't want to block anyone's driveway or put it like, for example, in front of a fire hydrant or something like that, that might be weird. But this is the approximate location of the two proposed speed humps. I think that's. So the estimated cost of construction is approximately 15,000. And staff recommends that the city council approve the installation of two new speed humps on Laurel between Fourth Place and Attar Doug. And that concludes my presentation, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions of the staff report at this time?
Nope.
Claudia, anything?
None at this time.
No, okay. Yeah, I'm just glad that I had a question about the fire department, if we would be a little bit jumping the gun because I know at times they've had some opposition to some of the speed bumps, more so than I guess the humps.
Yeah, generally, they don't like them. But they understand that that there's other needs other than just, you know, the truck to be able to get there one or two seconds quicker. So in this case, they did actually state that they approved them in their in their email reply to us, so.
All right. And I have one question.
Go ahead.
What, it's interesting, the speed bumps humps on Laurel are smoother than the new ones that the residents just south of Solvang School.
On Elm, yes.
On Elm, yeah. What's the difference?
Well.
And why?
Yeah, that's a good question. So the the existing ones on Laurel were built quite a while back. And I think over time, they do sort of kind of get compacted.
Oh, really?
And it gets slower. And then if you slurry sealed the street or do any kind of pavement work. But but also, we've modified the stand and updated the standard detail that we use to construct them. Specifically, so it will be a little bit taller. It's maybe like an inch and a half. The new ones on Elm, about an inch and a half, maybe two inches taller. So eventually, that'll be a project I would recommend for your future public works director, maybe with the next paving project to to raise those existing ones.
Thank you.
But these be, these new ones, if you approve them, will be built built based on the same exact standard detail, the updated standard detail that was used on Elm.
On Elm?
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the four are actually on Fifth Street?
The existing ones?
Are on Fifth Street, not Laurel? Because on that as well.
Oh, oh.
It shows on.
Yeah, okay, I see, I see.
Although at this point.
That's correct, yeah.
Fifth Street turns into Laurel on that one end.
Yes, you are correct, yes. Sorry, I misspoke.
Just double checking. Any, any public comment out there? Seeing none, and we only have our mayor, Brotem, and Zoom, so bring it back. Entertain a motion?
Yep, well, remove that we approve of the two speed humps.
I'll second it. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
Yes. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, we need a 9:30 motion, can I have?
I will make a motion that we continue this meeting after 9:30.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
No.
Oh, thank you.
All right.
That's two no votes, Charlie.
No, what's happening? So item number 11.
First reading of an ordinance adding musical entertainment as a conditional use in the tourist-related zone district, tourist commercial district, and other conforming edits. Introduce for first reading an ordinance of the people of the chartered city of Solvang, California, adding musical entertainment as a conditional use in the tourist-related zone district tourism, commercial district, and making other conforming edits.
City attorney will present.
I'm sorry?
City attorney will present the report.
You will.
Thank you, mister mayor, remember the members of the council before you tonight is the first reading of an ordinance adding musical entertainment as a conditional use in the tourist-related zone. In our review of issues relating to code enforcement over the last year or so, we determined that there was a need to have some allowance for businesses in the TRC having the ability to play music indoors and outdoors at their establishment. And the best way to address that on a case-by-case basis is to allow it by a conditional use permit. So what we've done is we've added a new definition of musical entertainment to the zoning code regulation definitions. We removed a definition that was not found anywhere else in the code since there wasn't a need and there was a potential to conflict with the definition of musical entertainment. And then we provided provision to allow conditional use of musical entertainment incidental to any permitted or conditional use allowed in the TRC. So if a business that is allowed by right or allowed by conditional use in the TRC wanted to provide music, it could apply to the planning commission. Planning commission would make certain findings as to whether or not the conditional use would be allowed, whether it is compatible with existing and future uses within the TRC. Planning commission could also impose conditions such as hours of operation and other things. So it just provides another opportunity or another tool in the planning process for planning commission to consider these types of requests. And obviously, a conditional use permit, if it were violated or otherwise not harmonious with the public health and safety and welfare, then the planning commission could move to revoke that as well. With that, we have to answer any questions.
Is there a decibel reading on any of this that would happen? I know it was with a noise or some type of noise ordinance.
There there is not in the proposed ordinance. There are two reasons for that. There are other noise regulations in the municipal code already that deal with excessive noise. The second reason is that unless you have someone who is trained in the use of a decibel meter and you have very clear standards as to where the decibel meter should be placed, it makes it a difficult code enforcement case. So what we've done instead is we've made it that the musical entertainment will not disturb the peace and comfort of the neighborhood. That sounds like a more vague standard, but it's actually fairly well-defined in the case law as to what that is. There was a case, I believe, out of Fresno involving car cruises. And they had a definition that that it would be not noise that would offend the the peace of the of the community. And the court said that is sufficient for a reasonable person to understand because it's not an individual subjective standard of noise, it's a community-based standard. Same thing here, if the planning commission makes a determination that for whatever reason a business is operating outside the bounds of its conditional use permit, then it can be revoked without having to go out on a code enforcement basis with a noise meter and and prove it beyond a reasonable doubt in a criminal case.
Okay.
Does that apply to MOCs with loud radios?
Yes.
There's gonna be a little bit different regulations on that because those are largely regulated by the vehicle code. There may be ways that the city can enforce it from excessive noise, but it's not something that we can cite as a vehicle code violation.
Are you talking, the the MOCs you could cite for a vehicle code violation at 50 feet?
Or we could ask Darren to to put a governor on volume control on those things. I mean, we could work with him on that. Because it doesn't annoy people.
Bring it back to the music. I know that, I mean, I'm a total nerd when it comes to music and live entertainment. As most of you know, I play in bands and do a lot of different music stuff. With that said, we're getting ready to remodel our Theater Fest. And I know that for about three years, I spent a lot of summers out with a decibel meter because the music that was in downtown Copenhagen was disturbing the peace of the patrons that were actually listening to the Theater Fest. And we're gonna be starting something here that the Theater Fest is not gonna be even. I guess the concern would be for me is, are we opening up can of worms? I would be actually interested to see how you, as a business owner of a wine event, Miss Sony, would would appreciate having music. And I think that would be something that maybe, I mean, just your neighbor, if your neighbor came and you maybe didn't like music or didn't want to have the music there and the way it's set up right now with Copenhagen, the music could be either inside or outside based on the 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 way this ordinance is read. Do we want amplified music outside in Copenhagen, right in front? I know when I was in Nashville, every single bar and most every venue, whether it was a restaurant or not, had music and every single one with their windows were open. But that's not Solvang, that's Nashville, that's Music City USA. And that's not what Solvang is. And I'm just, as much as I love music, I'm just wondering if we're opening up just ourselves to, I mean, more discussion about noise and things that are outside. And I would love to be that person playing or hearing. You know, for a while there during COVID, there was a couple of guys that would open up their suitcase, guitar case and be picking some some pretty nice tunes outside, totally, you know, just out by the park. But if every business would be allowed to have that, how do how do we make that designation of when one would have it and when one wouldn't?
Well, I I think that's what the planning commission would be examining. They need to make a finding under the ordinance that the nature, scale, and operating characteristics of the musical entertainment is compatible with existing and future land uses in the vicinity of the use where the musical entertainment is going.
And that's what the CUP is for.
That's what the CUP is for. And I and I understand the the concern about having amplified music on every corner. I just went through Winslow, Arizona, and you can listen to the Eagles on all four corners in Winslow, Arizona. If you're standing on the corner. It's a very odd thing to have that kind of amplified music. I believe, though, that the planning commission has the tools to make the determination. So if you had every business on Copenhagen coming in and asking to have live music every night, the planning commission would put a no on that. And if they didn't, the people who are affected by it would appeal it to the city council and the city council would have a no on that. So I I would encourage the council to at least consider the ordinance, put it into place if it becomes a problem. Obviously, it's a learning experience, we can tweak it as necessary. But the planning commission would be the first stop for any concerns about having excessive noise in the TRC.
But what is the current situation? If this doesn't, if this wasn't around, what happens today if someone wants to put music out? Anything?
We generally would look at it as an incompatible use. That's not something that is authorized as a permissible use in the TRC, so it could be a code enforcement issue. It could be. It depends on the nature of that. If it's interior and it's not audible from the exterior of the building and you have someone, you know, playing a guitar inside and no one can hear it from the outside, that's not gonna be a code enforcement. If you have someone who is sitting outside who is playing a guitar loudly with an amplifier and that's not a compatible use with the use that is permitted in the TRC, then we might be looking at a code enforcement situation.
So so what does this ordinance give us that what you just said is a code enforcement situation doesn't give us?
This adds the additional layer that if you do not have a conditional use permit for it, then it is an additional code enforcement that's much more clear to prove. Before we have this, we're looking at other ways to kind of patch together a violation, is what I'm saying.
So this almost protects as much against music as it does allow it to happen?
Correct.
But but it also does allow it, which right now, we have no way of allowing it? It just, it happens and if nobody objects, it's fine?
And that's essentially the enforcement stance that we've had, if no one has objected. And we have had some complaints recently, and so we looked at it. And I said at the beginning, this came out of our code enforcement concerns. We look for a way to address the issue at hand. If it is desirable to the council to have music on occasion and under certain circumstances in the TRC, this is the way that you make it happen. If it's, if the council doesn't want any kind of amplified or other music in the TRC, then we present you another ordinance, this is just a flat prohibition, there shall not be.
Thank you.
I have a question. So. So if somebody wants to get a conditional use permit so that the planning commission can approve for somebody to have music, are they subject to the same fees? Does does somebody that want to play guitar in the street is gonna have to pay $1,200 or whatever to be able to do it? Does Brucco, if they wanna have a band on the patio on top of the fee that they have to pay to the band, they're also gonna have to pay $1,200 to be able to have live music?
Well, the conditional use permit would not be on a per-event basis, it would apply to the property. So if a business owner was looking to have live music or bring in musicians on a rotating basis, they would need to have that permission upfront. So yes, they would have to pay that permit fee, but then they would be able to bring in additional musicians. So it's not on a per-event basis.
Okay. So based on that, there's no way that somebody that is playing out in the street can get permitted because it's not within a business, is is that my understanding?
That's correct, it's gotta be incidental to a permitted or conditional use allowed in the TRC.
Is there any way to do it on a, well, for instance, Wednesday night at the park, music. I had to park away, we'd walk up the street, there was always some guy on Copenhagen playing his guitar very nicely. Is, I don't know if he was brought in by the farmer's market or he just decided to sit there.
More likely, sit there.
Is that what he did?
Yeah.
And I don't, see, that that's the whole thing. I mean, it was never offensive, music was actually really good.
And I can tell you that good music is in the eye of the beholder, not beholder. It it really depends on, I think, it is a very subjective thing. There are situations where someone may complain about music. It may be that you get no complaints. It may be that it, the music is provided as part of a special event, so it's handled by a different part of the municipal code. But for your street musician who comes and sets up, it will not come across my desk unless somebody complains about it. And if someone complains about it, then I look to see, is it a violation of the municipal code in some manner? And if so, how do we enforce that situation? But I haven't had any of those come across my desk. I have prosecuted those in other cities, though, so I do know that codes exist to prohibit that kind of conduct.
Yeah, so I assume then that the Chamber of Commerce has a CUP for the music in the park?
Well, that would be a special event if they're doing a special event.
That's a special event.
That would be something separate.
What what you're describing is actually what I have, used to have to go out on many calls for musicians, either in the gazebo or in the park, parking lot, doesn't matter. Any of those musicians, part of it was you had to have a permit and you also had to have approval from the city manager prior to setting up the itinerary, a itinerant musician, so to speak. And so that was how that was covered and handled.
Music in the park was permitted?
Yeah. Did we, well, we've already asked for public comment. Would you, please? I asked, I was hoping.
Thank you for hearing me. All I can comment on being in Copenhagen and particularly since we've had the park at. Um, all I can comment on being in Copenhagen and particularly since we've had the parquet. This is, music outside has been an area that we've addressed that's been extremely problematic. You know, on whether we've called here the city hall or called the police, they've said there's nothing they can do. I've tried to address it with my landlord, with tenants that are the problem. He says it's, the city's put the parquet. So I've been held hostage by a business that plays loud rap, rock and roll, has karaoke, and people are nearly screaming out the doors. Where I've had tasters that even as late as this past weekend would go, what is that? You know, and nearly got up and left my establishment because of what was going on a few doors down from my business. I've even stood and gone as far down as nearly a block and you could hear it still going. So you have what's going on inside with one set of music, with people doing karaoke and howling. And then you have outside amplified music on speakers. So I'm in favor of some kind of ordinance that can help direct and protect, whether it's my business or other businesses, that we can mandate what's going on favorably, uh, whether it's conditional use permits or what. The other thing that I was thinking about is because it's solving and let's, you wanted to pipe in music that was more conducive to the village and particularly, um, Copenhagen. I mean, that would be one way that could eliminate something. I don't know.
Thank you for those comments.
You're welcome.
There should, there should be, uh, something that the sheriff's department can do, though.
They say not. I have to file something.
Well, that, that part is true. There has to actually be a complaint and someone needs to be willing to sign. That's the whole process of the way that works, so, but it is still available. Yes, sir, Mr. Hitchens.
Uh, I kinda wanna just, uh, amplify what the speaker just said and, um, offer a couple of ideas. Uh, various cases, you've discussed various cases, uh, you know, site-based business, uh, these moving vehicles with, they're really boom boxes on wheels, um, freelance musicians, and then events. So there's at least four different cases that in some way you may wanna address and each one is unique enough from the others that you may want to address it in some sort of, you know, subsequent manner underneath one overall umbrella. The thing that's driving us up the, the wall, certainly me, I, I'm out there all day on Copenhagen surfing, serving people wine under these parquets. And, um, I have had the experience on multiple occasions. It's part of their business about three doors down. It's part of their business model to bring in falling down drunk karaoke from about six PM on, on Friday and Saturdays and on Sundays in many cases. And the interesting thing is that they have outdoor blasting music that is different music than the, than the blasting indoor music with the karaoke. So by the time it gets three doors down, it's like this concafany that I'm shouting over to talk to my, my people, okay? So from the standpoint of, of a fixed site, there needs to be something about to limit the noise pollution, basically. We have, our boom box is about this big. It, uh, it channels music from a smartphone and it's bossa nova or something like that in a kind of a low tone that you can't hear ten feet away from one end of the parquet or the other. Maybe even you can't even hear it beyond the, the parquet. That kind of thing would seem appropriate, but when you're polluting the whole block and nobody seems to be able to do anything about it. One of the consequences of success here would be that something would be in place that people would have to have a basis for complaint. We could, we could have some control over to what extent it influences our business from up the street in any direction. And then the other thing is when one of those rolling boom boxes comes down the street, everything has to stop until they pass. And there's a stop sign right there. And of course, the more, the slower you go, the more you're noticed. So they tend to go really slow and that's extremely disruptive. Uh, not just to our business, but to the psyche of the people on the streets. So please fashion something that we can hang our hat on so that this community can control that kind of thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Thomas, is there, um, anything from our Isla Vista music ordinances that we put in place that could come into play here? Might be worth looking at. I know we had to do some special music ordinances out, out there because it just got to be where nobody could sleep.
So the. There are ordinances in place for the, the noise coming from, from the boom boxes, moving boom boxes, as you said. Um, those are vehicle code violations. Music isn't supposed to be heard from fifty feet. But if no one calls, the sheriff's department doesn't know. So all I can say is that's their job. That's what we pay them to do. And I will make sure that at least the lieutenant is aware of some of those complaints. Same with the music outside, um, even without this in place. There's still a noise ordinance in place that, but again, you have to be willing to sign because it's, that, as a, as a deputy and as a sheriff's department, we're, our peace cannot be disturbed. You can yell at me, say whatever you want to me. My peace cannot be disturbed. Your peace can be disturbed as the general public. So if your peace is disturbed, then you need to report that and you need to be willing to sign the, it's basically the citizen's arrest form. And that's the process that has to take place. Otherwise, then they're just going out there for nothing. But they can give everybody warnings and then if they have to come back, if someone is willing to sign, that's the way it works in neighborhoods when you have loud parties in the backyard. All of that is the same way, but it's just that education of you, everyone that wants to complain still needs to step up and take the next step. And that's sign the citizen arrest form so they can cite them and have them appear in court. That will immediately stop the music. It happens on all of it, so.
It hasn't. We've offered to do that from the first occasion.
Well, I, I heard you there, so I, I'll, uh, like I said, I'll, uh, let the, let our chief know.
Can we yell at you at meetings?
Absolutely. My peace cannot be disturbed.
This job ain't so bad.
Um, like I said, it's a process that has to be done and that's the education part of it. Most people really don't understand that. That's how it works. And, you know, you can say whatever you want to me, but, or us as deputies, and it doesn't matter. We just have to sit there or stand there, however.
Yeah, but calling is really worth it because if, if nothing else, I'll go ahead and, and say, you know, calm it down and give them an opportunity to, to lower the volume and so forth. And if that doesn't help, then they can come back and take enforcement action. So.
Yeah.
Your call is an, an automatic citation to the people. They would normally go and say, you know, you're, you're disturbing other people and give them a chance to remedy that before you go to, before you go to some kind of citation.
A- and I'll also point out, if the council does pass this ordinance, um, these are things that would inform the planning commission's decision. Uh, if you have a business that has repeatedly, uh, disturbed the peace in advance of trying to get a CUP, um, the planning commission may not be as likely to grant that CUP if it does get requested by a business.
And a CUP can get yanked.
That's correct.
Okay, yeah. So thank you for those comments and I'll see what I can do to get some enforcement out there. Um, with all the comments, there's no, uh, no action on this, just the first reading.
First reading, so I'll need a motion, uh, for the first reading.
All right, um, item number twelve.
No, I'll make a motion that we accept this first reading on item eleven for the ordinance adding musical entertainment and solving. Second?
Thank you. I miss it.
Proco? Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Infante?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Marona?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Yuric?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now onto item twelve.
Item twelve, AB twelve thirty-four, report out and council closing comments.
Anybody have any closing comments?
I have one. Uh, when Scott's sign was up there, or the presentation, you can see it as you come into town, the west end, the Solvang sign really needs to be sanded and painted because everybody stops to take pictures there and the paint's chipping and peeling off. So if we could, uh, maybe bring that to the next meeting or allocate some funds, I'm sure it's less than five thousand dollars. Let's get that sign painted. And I meant to bring that up to council comments, so I apologize.
Thank you for bringing that to attention.
One more thing. I don't know if it's your mask that's really thick. It's really hard to hear. And, you know, do you guys hear that? Is it very muffled when Anna Maria is speaking?
Well, no, normally if she turns her microphone on, it's a lot.
Maybe if you go ahead, I'm sitting behind you too.
Good job, Anna Maria.
Or I'm just not used to having somebody in that seat during COVID. Is, is the audience hearing you well enough?
Counsel, I appreciate you keeping it on.
On the AB one, two, three, four, um, on that note, will any of you be attending the League of California Cities? Because that would, uh, invoke an AB one, two, three, four report at the following meeting. You're supposed to give a brief summary, um, if the city is reimbursing you for any of the costs going to the league conference.
No, I have, I have decided not to go. I know, I really wanted to, but I.
I have a son graduating from a police academy in Boise, so.
Okay. Well, I don't know. I'm, I may not be able to. I know Mayor Protem Arona was planning on attending.
Good.
Okay, I, I just, it's just more of a reminder that at the next meeting, um, you will give that AB one, two, three, four, uh, report of what happened at the league. Um, so if you have any questions about it, I'm certainly happy to help that up.
It's okay.
Thank you. And with that, meeting is adjourned at ten oh nine.